All right, I will call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Generally, the first order of business we have is public comments. But as we know, people are just getting online. So if you have a comment, feel free to put it in the chat box while watching on YouTube, and we'll take a look at it. We don't hold you to the questions at this point only. We try to open it up to a wide variety of times, just so people can ask their questions. If you have something that is not on the agenda, this would be the great time to ask it. While we're waiting for that, I will do, I will go to school committee members for reports. But tonight, we'll do something a little special. So first and foremost, tonight is Brian Givernoni's last night as a member of the school committee after nine years. It's sort of his last night as an extended member of the school committee. For those who don't know, Brian will have the longest tenure ever, Brian and Meg potentially have the longest tenure ever of a single, a single session of a school committee because they got extended through June. So I do want to allow people to take the time to say goodbye to Brian because I'm going to start with Mr. Oakley.
Yeah, Brian, I just wanted to say thank you for always having time to talk to me about stuff and kind of driving home the fact that there, there's information out there and there's a lot of good things that you can do as a school committee member. I guess also, thank you for showing me how you can accumulate knowledge over your time on the school committee and you can use it for positive things. And I think one of the biggest things that I personally am going to miss about losing you is the immense amount of knowledge that, that you had about, or that you have about the district and, and how to get things done. So I really appreciate your time and all the thoughtfulness that you put into school committee meetings, and I'm going to miss having you here.
Thank you, Rich. I'll ask Greg Row to talk. Greg?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Brian, it's going to be hard to say goodbye to you on this committee. I'm sure we'll see you around. So thank you for all your service and the time you've put in. Thank you for all the advice you've given all of us, and especially me, when it comes to school committee or town politics and what is going on in the town. One thing that I'll really miss is you were always willing to discuss, no matter what the issue is and no matter what was going on, you would sit down, you would find time to take the time to discuss what's going on. But most importantly, you were willing to listen. We may not change your mind, we may not agree, but you were always willing to listen to whatever everyone had to say, and we really appreciate that. So thank you, Brian, for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, thank you, Brian, for all your effort. I mean, I think you're probably the hardest working member of the school committee. I mean, you, you always go to the extra events and report back to them, and it's great. And also, your expertise on all the different areas. We're going to miss your institutional knowledge, especially around the negotiations, because you, you have a good memory for all that stuff. And whenever we're talking about budget or negotiations, you're always bringing back, you know, history, like, oh, here's how we got here. And it's helpful to have that. So I will personally miss that knowledge. And I, but I have a feeling we'll see you around. And if not in the meeting, but, you know, in general. So thank you for your nine years. I think nine years' service, it's, it's a lot. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Ms. Jeanette?
So everybody kind of took what I was going to say. So, Brian, I just wanted to say thank you for your commitment to the school committee. Like everybody said, you're, I think, I definitely want to agree with Greg, you're definitely one of the hardest working members between all the committees that you're in and being on the building committee and doing negotiations. So to have that person there that's been there that knows what they're doing, we're definitely going to miss that. So thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Jeanette. And finally, from me, Brian. Just to be clear, the only reason I'm on this board is because of you. When there was an opening after Greg stepped down, you came to me and had a conversation. For those who don't know, you know, Brian and I probably had a rough beginning when we first met each other. But it was always, we always had a dialogue, and I thought that was really the important thing. We always talked. Anytime Brian wanted to talk, I met with him and had a conversation. Anytime I had something to, to talk about, he met with me at the, this is before the school committee. And so I was really very touched when Brian reached out to me and asked me to become a member of the school committee. I had no intention to. I didn't want to. I sort of passed that life behind me, and Brian and I talked about that. Brian told me there was a lot of things going on that they needed help with, and I could add something and hit the ground running rather than somebody who was just going to run. So I agreed, and I told Brian, only Brian, that I would only do it until the next election, and I had no idea I was going to run. And then, you know, some things occurred, and over that period in time, you know, the school committee hit a rough spot. And again, Brian was the first one, and when the chair stepped down and the vice chair decided that she didn't want to take the chair, or couldn't take the chair because it wasn't going to work for her, Brian was the one who stepped up and asked me again to be chair. So I have always enjoyed my time on the school committee with Brian. We have been together the longest, and Brian is obviously hardworking and always willing to listen and have a conversation. Especially if I have a problem, I can call him up and go over it, and we tend to work things out just to float ideas back and forth as the best way to approach certain things. The highest compliment I can pay anybody who serves an elected official is never once did I ever see Brian do anything that benefited Brian. Brian always made decisions based on what he thought benefited the school system and the town most of all. There have been times when we may have disagreed with each other, or just, you know, that there were pieces that we didn't concur on. But the fact of the matter is, we came to differing opinions based on, I think, both our belief of what's in the best interest of the school system and what's in the best interest of the community. So I'll always be grateful for that, Brian. I'll be grateful for your hard work and dedication and your commitment over and over again. And so I do want to take the time to thank your family for allowing you to spend some time away from them so you could help out the Middleborough School System and the town of Middleborough as a whole. And again, I can't thank you enough for reaching out to me and offering me this opportunity that I, to be honest, wasn't ready for, but through your work and dedication, you gave me a shot at. So I appreciate it, Brian, and I appreciate everything that you've done on this committee, even in the three years I haven't served with you. We would have those conversations back and forth even now. So that's what I wanted to say, Brian. So on your last night, Brian, I wanted to give you a chance to say anything that you wanted to say. So Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first thing I want to say is, tonight, I was, this afternoon, I was actually able to attend my first eighth grade dance since 1985. It was a virtual eighth grade dance that's online. If you get a chance to go online and see, see the Nichols Middle School eighth grade dance, it's only 22 minutes, but it's wonderful, and I love that Post Malone song. I just love it. So I want to start with that. I, I have to say, it's, I've been, I've been humbled, humbled and honored to be serving with you five and 10 others before you. I think it's been 15 different members in the last nine years, and I've learned, I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot as a person, not just as a school committee member. I've learned a lot as a school committee member, but as a person. The listening part is, is one of the things that I take with me. Listening is a, is a tough thing. You, you've got your, you always have your own opinion, but it's, I have learned to listen a lot better than I used to probably 15 years ago. So I really, I, I, I take something from this, that, that listening piece, and I'm always going to be available. So if anyone ever wants to call me, I am available. Feel free to call me. I'm, I'm definitely, we're going to be still around town, and so you'll see me. And I got to say is, you know, over the years, in the nine years, I've seen this district grow into the awesomeness, to take Toby Eugenio's word, the awesomeness that is what we have today. And I have to say, when I was first elected, I sat through a DESE interview, and all they kept talking about was the revolving door that is Middleborough. Administrators were just spending a year or two and gone in and out, and we have, I say we have, our administrative team, our, our teachers and ES, every piece of this, the cafeteria work is the drive, everybody works together as a team, and that's what makes this an awesome district, an awesome community, the school community. And I think that, I, I'm fortunate to have witnessed this change since 2011. You know, I, I'm just so thankful that I had this chance and the people gave me this chance. And I'm kind of sad that it's, it's a, it's a page turning in my life, but there's other things that I can do. I'll still be partially involved with the school building project because I'm not going to give up on that. I've spent, since the day we got the letter till now, working on that school project, that high school project. And there are other things that I would really, something I'd like to leave this board with and the incoming board, I hope they're watching, we're up to 43 right now on, on YouTube. With things that are going on today, I hope that we're, we have the ability as a district to put together, I know budgets are going to be insane this next year, but somehow put together a team so we can make sure that everybody is welcome in our community, everybody, with what's going on and even beyond. No one should ever feel like they're not welcome here in Middleborough, and I think that, and not safe, and, and their, and families too. I think that that is the one thing that if I've learned anything in the last month that I kept saying to myself, we need to make sure everyone feels like we're all together. So I hope that we're able to do something regardless of race, sexual preference, anything, put it all together. We should all be together in this, and I hope that we're able to do something. I know we're looking at that, so I, I hope we're able to do something. I wish I could be a part of that moving forward, so. But thank you. I appreciate the kind words you guys have all said. I've learned things from, from each of yous as well, and I'll let this meeting keep going on or I'll start crying pretty soon. Thank you. Mr. Chair.
That's the whole point, Brian. We have a pool, winner gets the money to make you cry. Does any, I, I do want to bring up, does anyone have anything else to report aside?
I wouldn't. That's okay, Mr. Chair.
Please, Ms. Megan.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say thank you for letting me serve on the board. I am up for reelection, so I'm hoping that people will get out and vote for me so I can continue to serve on the board. I also wanted to wish my challengers, Teresa Kelly Farley and Bob Sullivan, good luck. And I wanted to say thank you to Karen Foye and her team for putting together the candidates' forum, and I hope people watch that over the weekend.
And Ms. Megan, can I add a piece to that?
Please do, Greg. Right.
I got to say that both you and Megan have been working on this budget piece, sweating it out, trying to figure out how to make ends meet in this budget. So I really appreciate which both, I mean, we're going to get to that budget at some point tonight, but Rich, you and Megan, Jeanette, you guys have been working hard with, with the rest of the team, but we're, we're all volunteers here. So it, it's a little extra special when you guys are volunteering so much, and Meg, with everything you probably have going on in your house too, being Rich, you got, we all have it. So it's wonderful that you guys have been able to put that time in on this, and I want to thank you for that.
I do want to also add to everybody out there that this is an unusual town election. The election will be held from 10:00 AM to 4:00 o'clock. Those are not usual town hours. Normally, that runs eight to eight. But, so it's going to be different this year, so make sure you would go out and vote if you haven't already. I know a lot of people have gotten mail-in ballot or voted by absentee, but I, I just, I, I don't want people to think it's going to be, you know, you can show up at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night like usual and vote. The voting ends at 4:00 this Saturday, so please make sure you go to the corner. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Stevens?
I also want to thank Megan for her contributions over the last three years. She has really jumped into things. When I ran into some issues where I could not maintain the budget committee, Meg generously stepped up and took over, and I think what we've, we've, I think, functioned fairly well, and Meg's been a big part of that. So I hope to see you on the other side, and good luck on Saturday. Oh, and I also want to say, I did the building walkthrough, the Middleborough High School building walkthrough. Very impressive. It, it's amazing to see what, you know, because everything was still open, like the ceilings and the walls. You could see all the wiring and the piping, and it's amazing what goes in. I know Brian and Rich have been, you know, intimately involved in a lot of those details, but it's to see all the parts going into the building is, is amazing. It's a beautiful building. I can see it already. The theater is, is great. Everything just looks so, the, the entryway, you know, it just, I can tell it's going to be a great experience for our students. So thank you to the people that set that up, that walked through up. It was much appreciated.
Thanks, Greg. Anyone else have anything they want to add? Mr. Oakley?
Yeah, Greg, thanks for reminding me what we did this past weekend. I kind of forgot about that. But after leaving that walkthrough, I couldn't help but think if I, if I went to a high school that felt like that, I feel like I would, I didn't do so well in high school, but I feel like I would have, I would have been so committed to learning in a building like that. It's just incredible. Even as an adult, I wish that I could go back and go there. So yeah, thank you again for setting that up. Amazing, amazing building, and I can't wait for our kids to experience it.
Sorry, Greg, your guest?
Yeah, just, Rich just reminded me of something. One thing that impressed me in particular about the new building was the amount of common areas that students are having. It seemed like every corner you turned, there was a, a little place for people that could get together and do project work or collaborative work. The whole second level of the, the, what you call the mezzanine there was going to have spaces for students to gather. So that was really impressive, like, like Rich said, I mean, what Rich Oakley said, it, it seems like it's going to be a place that it will be, it'll be, it'll be nice to go to. So I'm glad my daughters will get to experience some of that.
Thank you. Anybody else? With that, I will give Sean a second to take away one of the school committee members and bring in Mr. Catino. So we're making the switch now. Mr. Catino, welcome.
Had done it myself. So first and foremost, I'd like to thank Brian for his service to the school committee. It's been a pleasure sitting across the table from him during negotiations. And I think that the atmosphere for negotiations, I think we made some huge leaps and strides last, this, this past time with the, with the style of negotiations that we decided to try. Foster's a really good feeling between the association and the school committee. So really appreciate that you guys are willing to step up and give that one a shot. Been interesting last couple of months for the teachers, trying to learn how to do stuff new for most of them. Some teachers like myself have been preparing for stuff like this for a little bit longer than others. Me, for my own health reasons, I've got everything already digital as, as, as Brian already knows because I've had both of his children now in honors geometry, both a pleasure to have, but a lot of electronic stuff that we've already been working on. But there's always more stuff to come. It's been, I think I've, I've signed more MOAs in the last three months than I have in just about the entire time that I've been the president of the union. So it's, trying times involve a lot of compromise and adjustments. So anyway, I thank you guys for just stepping up and making sure that every...
I think Frank froze. All right. Well, I want to say to Frank, I want to thank him and the union for all their hard work in working out a wide variety of problems that we've had over the, the last few months, and they've been there and been very helpful in that. I also want to thank Frank personally because he has constantly been in dialogue. Frank, you're back!
I also want to thank Frank personally.
Because Frank's been in dialogue with us, having discussions about everything. So thank you, Frank. I appreciate all your help, and we appreciate everything the union's done. The union's really stepped up, and I know even with regard to the budget, you've been there to make sure, for example, we extended the, within MOA, we extended the RIF notification date so that, we had hoped that we wouldn't have to send anybody out a RIF notice, and we didn't have to. And, and so, you know, we're hoping to make it through to those dates and everything like that. So I want to thank you, Frank, for all your hard work and help.
Not a problem. I will, see you guys in the fall. I shall probably be watching you throughout the summer because can't go anywhere, can't do anything, so, about the way it works. Anyway, thank you all.
Thank you, Frank. Does anyone have any questions for Frank before he takes up? Brian?
Frank, I want to thank you for sitting with me through all of our interest-based bargaining. We sat next to each other pretty much the entire time, which was awesome, passing notes back and forth every once in a while to make sure that we all retreat fairly, which I thought was awesome that we worked together like that. And that's the way I really like to work. I think that interest-based came out a little bit better than collective the previous time. So I think we all felt good when we left too. I want to thank you for, for representing your union, but representing them with us. So thank you, and I'll, I'll see you, I'll see you in the fall.
Any other questions for Frank? With that, Frank, we thank you for joining us and hope you have a wonderful summer.
I'll give it a shot.
Hopefully, it's not like this. With that, I will move on to the agenda. The next item on the agenda, for the first time appearing with us this evening, is the superintendent of schools, Brian Lynch, and the superintendent's report. Oh, he was appearing with us, but then decided not to. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I too want to send out my regards to Brian G. on this great night for him, I guess, as he moves on. We're going to miss him being around. I'm going to miss his commitment. I think that's the biggest word I can think of when I think of Brian Givernoni, his commitment to our district is without question. And from his orange and black wardrobe, which I'm jealous of, to every, every speech and every comment that he made at every meeting that I've ever been to, it's all been in the best interest of kids, which is what he's all about, obviously, his own children and then the children of the district. And he's really blind to that. He's always thinking about, certainly about his kids, but he's thinking about every child in the district, every one of the 3,000 kids in our district. But I think that orange and black is symbolic of that commitment that he's made, certainly a financial commitment to the wardrobe, there's no doubt about it, but it's more than that, and we all know that. Greg Stevens mentioned his institutional knowledge, and I think that we're going to miss that greatly. And I was going to say a near photographic memory, but I think Brian is pretty darn close to a photographic memory, as close as I've heard and seen in my days. And when I came to negotiations of, of 12 contracts that I've been involved with, with Brian, that knowledge came in incredibly handy. And his, his sort of, his feel for, for the negotiations table, his willingness to go to interest-based bargaining from the traditional, I think, was something that was a removal from everything that the school committee's always done, but he saw it as a positive move. He saw it as something that would be, something that would be productive or more productive, and it certainly was. And you heard Frank's words and Brian's words also in terms of the two of them sitting and, and breaking bread, really, almost at every meeting. We, we did have sandwiches and chips, and there was a lot of things that were discussed on those downtimes that proved to be productive. So, so Brian, thank you again for your commitment to the Middleborough Public Schools. Hopefully, we'll see you around. I know you're continuing to be a parent, but now you'll have a chance, I'm thinking your son's going to be running at Bridgewater State perhaps on the track team. You'll have a chance to attend his and, and move on with his legacy. You had a great legacy here at the high school, and hopefully, that'll continue with Bridgewater State. And your daughter, certainly at the high school, will, will make her own footsteps in the future. So Brian, again, thank you on behalf of, of all the faculty, staff, administration, and students of the Middleborough Public Schools for all your, all your nine years. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank, thank you for those, those words. Thank you for being here. You came in at a tough time. When I talk about what Toby used to say, the awesomeness, you build that with your administration, your team. We, we all know, we give you all the accolades and you pass them down to your team. You have a great team, and you've built a great team here, and they all work together. And I, I, if there's one thing I can say for a legacy is you're here. That's one of the things that I am happiest about, is that you're here, and the team that we have here that's just phenomenal. So I served under, I, I'm sorry, I served above, but together with three slash four different superintendents, so back and forth and back and forth, but we landed on the best ones though. I want to thank you for, for being here and serving. Thank you, Brian.
And thank you, Brian, and I, and I, again, will, will obviously miss the occasional times that we had pizza and something else perhaps after meetings and enjoyed those times with, with former school committee members. Franco, Rich Gill's come to mind in terms of people that we had a, a good time with and great relationships. And I also think back to our friend Terry Page, looking down tonight, and certainly appreciative and thanking you for all that you've done. And you know darn well she's looking down, and you know darn well she should give you a call tomorrow if she possibly could, so.
Okay, who won the pole?
Maybe a call from heaven. So there we go, Terry Page. All right, I'm going to go on with my report, and speaking of Brian Givernoni and all the people in my team, I will obviously be featuring members of my team in my report tonight, very important people of the district and, and people that, that make this place work as well as it does and continue to, hopefully. The first is the COVID-19 update, obviously you know, and I'm going to combine one and two together sort of. Today was the last day of school. As part of that sort of last day of school and talking with us, talking with the school committee the last couple of meetings, discussing the fact that we really need to assess what we've done and how we've done it, with the understanding that the fall is going to look significantly different and perhaps involve more remote learning than we perhaps thought. We don't know yet, it's still up in the air. I've heard a couple of superintendents locally at different school committee meetings referring to what's going to happen the fall is, is up in the air, and we don't know, and we still don't know. But it's clear that the state is going to come on strong in terms of what their recommendations are and their expectations, and the rest of us will, will need to follow that. So that's what we're looking at in, in terms of the COVID-19, and we'll see how it affects our school year in, in the future. I want to bring Dr. Melanie Gates on, if I could, please. Sean, and we've developed, we worked as a group today, and Sean, Cecilia, and Dr. Melanie Gates especially, working on an end-of-the-year survey for parents to try to assess what we've done. And Melanie, if you could try to sort of characterize that and tell us, tell us the committee what that's all about and what we're trying, what kind of data we're trying to gather that we can build on for the future. Thank you, Dr. Gates.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch and school committee members. If I could, Mr. Givernoni, it's been a pleasure to get to, to know you and work alongside you for the betterment of our school community. I've been proud to learn with you. You've challenged me to be better as an educator and administrator in person, and I appreciate it. So thank you so much. We're going to be launching a survey tomorrow, so please be on the lookout for it. This survey is to help us gauge how extended learning felt for members in our community, felt in terms of the academic and social and emotional engagement and achievement of our students. It's important that we receive this feedback to help us understand the impact that we've had during this recent school closure period, but to also help us inform what the fall could potentially look like if we are in the unfortunate circumstances of not welcoming our students back into the brick-and-mortar school. So please, as you receive those emails and text messages, if you could respond to that survey, we would appreciate it. The survey will be open until next Friday, so all responses would be appreciated from the families in our community.
It's for Dr. Gates.
Any questions for Dr. Gates? Dr. Gates, I just want to thank you as, as usual. You have picked up additional pieces in COVID-19 and been there for us over and over again, and so on behalf... And so on behalf of the committee, I really want to say thank you for all the extra that we've done. I know this was not the way we wanted to finish class. But I would think that class is finished fairly strong based on the work that everyone's done, both the teachers, administration, and especially you putting it all together. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you Dr. Gates. Oh, I see through you Mr. Chair, I think I see Greg Row with a handle.
Mr. Row, sorry. You hear mute sign, Greg.
Through you Mr. Chair, thank you. I was able to attend the NIESC, which is New England School of Accreditation, seminar on this and they had people from every state involved. And I got to give credit to all the administrators who are trying to deal with this right now. Someone described it as trying to land a plane with no set destination and they're trying to hold the plane together. And it was pretty accurate as things change week to week. I really do hope that people out there understand that this is changing week by week. That the orders that Mr. Lynch or any of the school committees might get over the next week or next two weeks or the next month or two could possibly change. Hopefully always for the better, but we just don't know. So for all the work that I know, most teachers and most administrators try to relax in the summer. I do not think you guys will have the summer off. So I appreciate all the work that you guys are putting towards this and making our children safe and finding the best learning environment for them to be in.
Yeah, Greg, I couldn't agree with you more. And the one thing I'd just like to say to people, you know, I had to do some conversations with people because Desi published a memo. The memo was solely on supplies and purchasing supplies. And people took that to mean what it was going to happen to school and everything like that. But I can't emphasize enough that everybody here and all the administration, as soon as we hear what school's supposed to look like, we're going to talk to the community about it. We're going to have that conversation immediately. And we're not holding things back. We're not going to put things out. We want you to be as prepared as we are. But again, as Greg said, if somebody puts something out today or tomorrow or the next day, chances are it's going to change in the two months. For example, childcare has changed tremendously in two weeks. So I think that's important to note. We're going to be as transparent as we can. We're going to talk about it. I think one thing out of the COVID-19 that we really sort of have to do, it is sort of our usual process that we meet once a month during the summer. And I don't know that we'll be able to do that given some of the stuff that we'll have to be a part of and have conversations about. We may have to meet more and we're sort of going to be open-ended on our meetings. Because we haven't been following the schedule. We've been following when there's enough information, then we'll have another meeting and work on what we need to work on. So I just wanted to raise that. And again, I can't emphasize enough the great work that everyone's been doing, like Greg said.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just on that note, you know, we're so proud of what everyone has done in the community, particularly our faculty and staff, students and families. It's really shown the strength of our community, that we really are one team committed to to the goal of fostering a culture of excellence within every student and every classroom every day. And it just so happened the classroom might have been the kitchen table or they're in the living room. But nonetheless, we worked as a team and I'm really proud of that effort. And today was a great day to celebrate the conclusion of a school year where we finished strong. And we were able to have our eighth grade parade today, which was wonderful, and give out the T-shirts to our eighth graders. And it was so great to see them all and see their smiling faces. And it just makes us all even more eager to get back with our kids next year.
I have a couple of questions that have come online that I'll read because I think they're important. The first is this. Who has the final say when it comes to the state, to what the state says for guidelines? Such as wearing masks for students or learning remotely? They can pass them along, but as a school committee, do we have to follow them 100%? Well, thank you Sean for writing that out for everybody. The short answer is yes. Unless the state allows us leeway in which they'll put out, we have to follow the guidelines that the state issues. To put it in perspective and so people understand, the, one of the set of guidelines that we have seen is Rhode Island's guideline. And Massachusetts is not Rhode Island, but the thing I want to point out to everybody is Rhode Island, for the first time in their history, set a single calendar for every school district in the state. I'm not saying Massachusetts is going to do that. What I'm saying though is every school, every school committee in Rhode Island had to follow those, that new setup. And they had a negotiation piece with the union. Sean, am I correct Brian? Just to make sure I'm not.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And the next question asked about are they considering with the community, the community numbers? So each community sort of has its own COVID-19 numbers to adjust for each town. And the commissioner has mentioned in his meetings that there are hotspots and that there are communities that have been affected differently and more intensely, if you will, with regard to COVID-19. And there may be adjustments for that, but the general plan would be that every school district would follow that. And more, the districts that have much higher numbers, the incident levels for COVID-19 would have sort of even more rules about being cautious with regard to spacing out and social distancing and things such as that. So, but the answer to some of these, I see some of the other comments about, do we have a definite date yet and parents are looking for, parents are looking to make plans for the fall? And we just do not have that information yet. And I want to stress that, that we have not received guidance, definite guidance from the state with regard to what we're supposed to do. We've begun the planning process, we think, based on some guidelines that have been published, but we have also been warned, and Dr. Gates could probably agree to that, that we've listened to the commissioner and his last meeting last week was, you know, everybody jumped on the guidelines that I sent out and assumed that everything was going to be going half a class one week and half a class the next week. And he said that's not the case and people need to understand that people that sort of overblown, that was overblown in terms of that information and it became news stories and it became sort of gospel, if you will, as opposed to just some guidelines that were sent out. And he wasn't overjoyed about the sort of the media that cast that sort of aspersion, if you will. But it comes down to what the state is going to come forward with and we hope, we anticipate that. Late June was the term that he used last week in speaking with us. So we'll see what happens, what the next step is. So unfortunately. And I too would like to mirror what Dr. Gates said about the end of the school year and recognizing faculty and staff for going above and beyond in a new world, in a new normal, something that we weren't used to. And they really dug in. I could speak as a parent also. I was very impressed with the fifth grade teacher that did a tremendous amount of work with my fifth grade daughter who was as engaged, I think, as any student because she wants to and she loves school. And she did everything she could. She was doing projects at home and she was doing PowerPoints and she was doing motion slides and all kinds of new things, computer stuff that she may not have ever done before. So as a parent, I was impressed, but I was also impressed obviously as a superintendent with a larger network. Even our administrative team working together and talking things out. And again, you talked earlier about a committee that sometimes doesn't always agree 100%. We've had discourse back and forth between administrators and it's been lively discourse and people disagree with one another, but we build consensus on facts and we build consensus on data. And that's why I think these surveys that have been done in the past and going to be done tomorrow, starting tomorrow, give us that assessment data that we can look at and say, how do we build a better school system if part of it's going to involve remote learning? I think part of that is another piece to my COVID-19 update is we're going to work real hard to try to get more technology in the district so that we're trying to get every child to have some type of a Chromebook or something that they can bring home. We definitely have Plymouth County, as we know Plymouth County has a great deal of money. It came from the federal government and we know for a fact that there are communities, local communities, namely Marshfield and Plymouth, who bought technology with that and have been reimbursed with technology with money from the COVID-19. So it is our intention to put an order together to get to the point where we would have a Chromebook or a computer in every child's hand if need be. We're also looking at purchasing hotspots for those families in those living environments in town that don't necessarily have internet. So those parents don't have to go to the library parking lot or hotel parking lot or McDonald's parking lot to get internet. So we're working on all of those things in anticipation that we, at least part of next year, will definitely be, take some form of remote learning. And I think that has to be an investment in the future. And I'm glad that we're able to use that COVID-19 money from the state and from the county and from the federal government to make that investment in our community. So that is our hope. Again, part of our meeting this afternoon with myself, Dr. Gates, Sarah Hickey and Sean Siciliano was talking about that, that purchase and the importance of that purchase to get that going as soon as possible and hopefully get fully reimbursed by that Plymouth County money.
Greg, you had a question?
Through you Mr. Chair. Thank you both for this wonderful insight into what you have been hearing and what you have been seeing. One thing I did hear from Bob Baldwin out of Fairhaven, who I believe is the chief of the Superintendents Association or incoming. He did say that Massachusetts was looking to mitigate, I mean, trying to prevent, they said was almost an impossible task, but they're looking on ways to mitigate things into the building and the disease into the building. Is that what you guys are hearing too? Or is that just something that I kind of picked up on?
And I know Bob Baldwin, he was actually once the principal of Middleboro High School, superintendent of Fairhaven Public Schools. He is involved in roundtables. I'm involved in an old colony roundtable with him. And he has been involved. He's on that larger committee that represents this area and goes to the state through MAS. I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about Greg in terms of trying to mitigate. I just, can you talk a little bit about that?
From my understanding is that if schools do open, their job is to mitigate, do everything they can to prevent the virus from coming in, but they can't guarantee that it won't. And schools need to be prepared that if it does come in, there'll be some form of possible remote learning after that.
Yeah, I agree with that. I would say that at that level, at the state level, they're talking about a lot of things. They've involved outside consultant agencies. They have doctors that they're working with, trying to figure out, they've already made the determination that because of so many false positives or false negatives, they're not recommending that teachers, that schools take temperatures of students as they walk in. They want to make sure that parents know that if a child has a temperature, that child needs to go home. That we're going to have to have a separate area in each school where the children will have to be located until the parent does come and pick them up. Certainly the requirements for parents to be much more mindful of students and their symptoms, whether it be a fever or whether it be cold-like symptoms and things such as that and not sending them to school. And everything we can do in school to prevent, we put a, just put a huge PPE order together the other day. I signed the purchase order for that and that is going out to buy a great deal of equipment, protection equipment for faculty and staff and students. So students would buy, with the commissioner has also said that, you know, the students would be responsible for wearing their own masks to school, but the school would have to have masks just in case something happened to the mask with the student. So, and so we're going to try to do everything we can, possibly can.
And Brian, just to be clear, that PPE order that you sent out, that's under a separate grant from the federal government?
Correct, correct. Okay, if there are no further questions with regard to that, I'll move on to, we have FY '20 budget update and FY '21 budget update. And I'd like to invite Sarah Hickey, our Director of Business and Finance, to the meeting. Welcome Sarah. You have your, mic is muted. There you go. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you very much Superintendent Lynch. I just, I want to start by echoing the thanks that everybody has already said for Brian Givenoni. I just want to let you know that I appreciated your keen analytical mind when we were working on negotiations together and I really appreciate your sense of humor as well. So thank you for working with me for the short time that I've been here. My fiscal year '20 budget update, it hasn't changed dramatically since the last time I spoke with you. I'm trying, still trying to get all of the information from vendors that we need and get everything paid. We don't have much time left to fiscal year '20. And we did have a stoppage of work in some of the departments in the district. And so we have a lot of things coming over now. So there's a mad flurry of things being paid. We did settle a contract with First Student. They have invoiced me and I sent me the contract today and I just have to read through that and make sure it agrees with all the edits from the legal team that went over it. And that should be paid tomorrow, provided the contract is adequate.
Great. Sarah, thanks for the hard work on that particular piece. We really appreciate it.
So any questions about fiscal year '20? Okay, for the fiscal year '21 budget, Superintendent Lynch, do you want me to talk about our meeting the other day?
Certainly.
So early last week Superintendent Lynch, Chairman Young and myself met with Town Manager Bob Noons. He gave us a $300,000 reduction in our fiscal year '21 budget. We are going to reduce our special, one of our special ed tuition lines by $300,000. The great news is that in my negotiations with First Student, it saved the district $500,000 of money. And Bob Noons has agreed to let us use that money now during fiscal year '20 to prepay tuitions for next year pending approval at town meeting next week. So yes, we have a $300,000 cut to our budget for next year. But we don't have to cut staff at this point because of Bob Noons' generosity with that transportation savings.
Does anyone have questions about that in particular?
Mr. Chair, I did send a note out to all the faculty last year, last week after our meeting Thursday night at our budget subcommittee meeting. And I thank yourself, I thank yourself and Megan Janess for coming out and meeting on that evening. We were able to make decisions based on that $300,000 in recommendations and realized that we at this point, and this is barring any tremendous cuts in local aid, at this point, we're going to town meeting with a budget that does not involve cutting any more people. It doesn't mean we didn't have to cut some people this year and we did eliminate a couple of administrative positions and a couple of other positions, but not in the classroom, doesn't affect the classroom. And that's the important thing, so.
Brian Givenoni, you had a question?
My question was with regards to the $300,000 reduction in this year's budget that, to the meetings with the town manager, those are reflective of the town's side, I think, right? Or it's our number right now because we still don't know what the state's talking about, whether it's a 1, 2, 5 or 10. God, 10. I'll swallow a 1%, but that's about it from the state.
So the number that Town Manager Noons used with us was 4.4%. So he anticipated a 4.4% cut. And for that, it translated into 300,000. And when he split that amongst the departments, that translated into a $300,000 cut for the school department. And so many, if not all, departments in the town were given a number to cut for next year. And as I said, we're thankful that Bob Noons is allowing us the opportunity to ask at town meeting to transfer the savings from the contract negotiations with First Students into special ed tuitions so that I can cut the tuitions for next year, but pay them this year before the end of the fiscal year.
Right. And Mr. Chair, my side I was looking at was the Chapter 70 money from the state. Do we have any word from the hill what they're talking about with, are they going to hold harmless on the Chapter 70 and reduce other local state aid or are they going to look at the Chapter 70? Because I haven't heard anything about that. Because, I mean, a 2% cut in state aid on the Chapter 70 number is $380,000 for us additionally. So I haven't heard anything. I don't know if anyone's heard anything on that.
That's another mystery that we don't know. And Bob Noons hasn't heard anything. He's had conversations with legislators. I know that Chairman Young has had conversations with legislators. It is undecided at this point. One of our thoughts was that that Student Opportunity Act money with the budget foundation that they were looking at changing and where 85, 86% of the money was going to 35 communities, that that money would go first, but we don't really know at this point. That would mean somewhere like a Brockton where they were getting another $25 million. That would not go to them, but we'll see what happens. We're not sure. And Sarah has separate meetings where Sarah may have heard something from the business managers, but right now it's everyone's guess on what's going to happen.
Any other questions about that? Rich Oakley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wondered where we obviously made this budget in a time where COVID did not exist and, and you know, this budget is about to be hopefully passed at town meeting. What is the mechanism for revising a budget when we no doubt get some sort of guidance that could very well increase our costs? I did, I know that we're about to talk about at some point the MAS C letter about the result of COVID should be reimbursed by the state, but how do we handle that if in, you know, three weeks, our budget goes through the roof because of guidelines?
Well, go ahead, Sarah, please.
We do have two sources of funding. One is the CARES Act money that I'm in the process of writing a grant through the state for money that's available and there's specific guidelines of how we can use that. And then there's the reimbursement for costs incurred for mitigation of COVID-19 that will come through the Plymouth County money. So when you say the costs are skyrocketing, our costs would skyrocket because we need additional technology. Well, that's an allowable expense for both of those sources of funding or our costs might skyrocket because we need 11,000 gallons of hand sanitizer for the first 12 weeks of school. So and that is an allowable expense for reimbursement. So the state knows that we're going to have increased costs and we have those two pools of money where we can mitigate any damage to the budget, you might think.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Greg.
With regards to that is, one of the things I always watch is the state law, Proposition 2 and 1/2 is a state law that is provided us. Anything the state mandates to us, so long as this board does not willingly accept, they absolutely should get reimbursement from the state. If we can't get it in any other way, the state has to do it. The state is not allowed under the law to put an unfunded liability onto any community. So if they all of a sudden come out and say, you have to do this, this, this and this, and we figure it's going to be $3.5 million to cover that. There's only 90 million in that fund in Plymouth County and it's going, it's going to go fast. I don't see it lacking until December 31st. So we want to make sure that if you take a vote, just when you, I've done this in the past with McKinney-Vento, that we do not willingly accept the provisions of McKinney-Vento, which was our homeless transportation, which is why I always say it's an unfunded mandate that we should be reimbursed and we never have been. But that's something you should keep in mind. Don't willingly accept a burden by the state in a simple vote. Always put the unwillingly. Because if you do that, at least we could somehow try to go after them, even though we'll never get it from them. But it's one thing I always put in there, so just keep that in mind.
Right. I think one of the things that we're fortunate to have, Rich, more than anything else is this. Bob Noons worked at the Department of Revenue prior to coming to Middleborough. He understands the state budget in and out. He understands the revenue sources. There's been some good signs. For example, so far in June, the retail revenue has picked up greatly for the state for retail shopping. That's been good. I think part of the reason why they haven't taken up the budget at all, Rich, is because there hasn't been any recovery. So they don't want to make decisions on the budget based on bad numbers that have happened in March and April because nothing was going on in March and April. They want to take, so the state budget doesn't have to be done in a fixed period in time. Many times the state budget has gone out to September. If you think about the additional funding that we got, that everything was laid out for the school, the way they redid the school budgeting formula happened, I believe, last October, November and the final numbers came out December, late December, January, somewhere, or maybe even February, somewhere along there. So it can take a while. So that's part of what they're doing. Greg, I know you had a question.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I would just like to comment on and thank Superintendent Lynch, Ms. Sarah Hickey, Chairman Rich Young and Meg Janess for coming and putting this together with uncertain numbers and you see everything that's happening in towns around us and we're not going through that drama or craziness because you guys have worked well with the town and you've worked well with each other to get it done. And we, from a school committee and a parent standpoint, I am very appreciative of all the work that you guys have put forward. I know we still have some uncertain numbers and other shoes may drop, but to get to this point with relative stability is very, very impressive. So thank you.
Thanks a lot. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Sean, are there questions for us? I'll give Sean a minute to post any questions around there.
Rich, can you see those comments?
I am now. So okay, a couple of things I see that I'll bring up. Someone had asked what special ed tuition is. And what special ed tuition that we're talking about is out of district placement. If a student goes to a placement not in our community, not in Middleborough. So for example, we have placements that go to Reed's Collaborative. We have placements that go to other sole special ed schools. That's what we mean by special ed tuitions. The additional question related to that was what happens if it's not approved at town meeting, the transfer of money, that means we're $300,000 behind in next year's budget and we'll have to make changes. That's what that means.
Mr. Chair, there was also a question about, that Sarah can probably answer. What was the percentage that was settled on with the First Student contract? Can you talk a little bit about that, Sarah?
Yes, we came to an agreement with First Student to pay 30% of the total cost. So they gave us, I worked with a team of school business managers, nine other school business managers in the area and they gave, First Student gave us each a breakdown of their operating costs. And when we subtracted out the numbers for driver salaries, First Student had laid off their drivers here in Middleborough and in many of the other towns that I was working with. When you subtracted that amount of money out and subtracted out certain costs, we came to an agreement that 30% of our contracted rate would would cover their costs for bus leases on buses, storage yard fees, management management costs as well as maintenance, even though the buses aren't running, there are requirements of, from the state of inspections for school buses and even though the buses haven't been running, they've still needed to be inspected and when something is found on a school bus, it needs to be fixed. So those are costs that we have, that are included in that 30%.
So one other question came up to, what are you guys doing about transportation to school? Half occupancies on buses? That hasn't been that hasn't been announced by the state at all yet. There's no half occupancy on a bus, anything like that. Any change to bus routes, as Brian Givinoni said, would be an unfunded mandate that the state would have to come up with money for in order to allow those changes. So that's part of Proposition 2 and 1/2, as Brian said. And that would be something that they would have to announce in some way or shape of it.
And Mr. Chair, we'd also be looking at the bus regulations on the students that we have to transport. And that would become something that we transport a lot of students from the downtown area to the complex. We'd have to take a second look at that. That's a convenience at this point in terms of law when it comes down to the money and if we needed a room on the buses. We'd also have to, we'd have to look at a lot of things and that's not something right now that the state has taken a position on. It's something obviously we've thought about. Something obviously we're concerned about and the spread of the virus. And hoping, against all hope, that this eventually gets taken care of medically. But right now we have to deal with the situation as it is and that bus question is a concern at school level. It's a concern at state level and it is, will continue to be a concern. So we'll see, but that's a good question and it's a great question, actually, and we'll have to deal with it as we come. The next on my
Oh, one other thing, Brian, before you go on. I know Greg Stephen has a question, so if Sean can bring Greg back so Greg can ask the question. Go ahead, Greg.
Through you, Chair, to Mr. Lynch. So if the state did come through with, or if the mandated for the bus occupancy did change, wouldn't that, would we have to change our contract with the bus company? Because wouldn't we have to redo the routes and all that?
We certainly, we certainly would have to revisit a lot of what's in the contract and that would mean probably, you know, between the Budget Subcommittee and Sarah, myself, and then to the larger committee, there would have to be some changes in there. There's no doubt about it. So.
Thank you.
Next on my program, I'm going to switch this around just a little bit only because Sarah's right here. And she has spoken and met with the people from Champions before and after school program and has a bit of an update with regard to a summer program that we're looking at, we're looking at putting in place. So Sarah?
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch. On Tuesday, June 9th, I met with Kerry Kubaki and James Mott from Champions and we were discussing the potential of opening. We had been talking all along with them about a summer camp program and so we met to talk on June 9th and one of the things we talked in depth about was the Department of Early Education and Care has produced a 33-page manual of all of the all of the steps that you need to take in order to, to open a childcare facility. Including, and you'll hear some of this in Carolyn Lyons' presentation later, but it includes some transportation, which Champions would not do, but it certainly will come up in Carolyn's presentation. So I met with them and they walked, I had them walk me through the day of what it would look like for a student that was coming to the Berklin School for a summer camp program with Champions. And they walked me through the moment from drop-off to a health screening, straight into hand washing, then into the cafeteria. We talked about the areas of the building that they would use, the areas outside the building they would use. And we talked, they have guides. I had Ian Gagnon put them in the drop box. They have two different guidelines to give to parents explaining the safety and care that they will have implement during the programming, depending on what level we're at at the state of what, what level of need that we're at at the state. And so they were originally looking to begin their program on June 29th and now they have revised that and are looking to begin on July 6th. I have to check my calendar and just make sure that's the Monday. So I had asked them, I had explained to them that we would like to talk to you about opening the building to them. And I don't know if there needs to be a vote that's taken allowing that. But if so, this is the time. Any questions about the program they will be running?
I do want to say a couple of things which I think are important. One, it offers us the opportunity to get children back into the school during the summertime on a much smaller level and to go through things and see how things are running so we can use it what we want to do in the fall. The second piece that I think is important to note is that there are childcare places throughout the Commonwealth have had diminished their numbers in order to meet requirements. So this is another opportunity for families in Middleborough to be able to give their kids something to do for the summer and for parents to be able to come to some normalcy about being able to go to work and being able to do the things they need to do. This is part of the Champion contract that we agreed to. So I don't know that we need a specific vote from the board because we already approved it. But I think this is more the time to ask questions and if somebody had concerns, I think they could raise it that way and ask for a delay or ask for whatever they want. So I'll throw it out to the rest of you to see if anyone has any questions. Anybody?
Well, just one of the things I will say that Champions isn't an advantage right now because they closed down in March and they have just been preparing for reopening this whole time. So the whole time that we've been doing online learning and trying to keep up with changes, they've had the time to plan and prepare and to train staff and they're in a good place.
And they've also assured us that they will meet every single requirement and condition that is set by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed with regard to, or the early childhood piece of that branch and they would meet everything. Check all the boxes, if you will. And it would also, like Rich Young said, provide an additional opportunity for families in Middleborough who need quality childcare at a time when obviously people are starting to go back to work. And this, this is a program that hopefully would be running at the Berklin School, be running the Berklin Cafeteria area base and would be using the playgrounds and so that is something that we have an agreement with Champions and if there, if it's allowed through the state. And I agree with the chair that I think that we should move forward to this.
I think it's also, the other piece to mention too is aside from state guidelines, aside from everything else, they still have to pass the muster of our own border health. So there's a local component to it too. So it, you know, it isn't like somebody runs under state auspices and doesn't get looked at or viewed. The border health from the community come in and talk to people and they have all along, much like they do come into our kitchens and have conversation with our cafeteria workers. So unless anyone has any objections or any questions, then we'll proceed with the terms of our contract and Sarah, I think from the sounding, would be fine to allow Champion proceed as long as the state allows them to proceed knowing full well that again, things could change over a period in time and the state may alter regulations, but it's an opportunity to for parents to have childcare if they need it. And I think that's very important.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In closing that out, I would say, I know that Rich Oakley has a question. I can see that. But in closing that out, I would say that we've already had discussions with Jim Hutchinson, our Facilities Director, to go through the facility and measure out what 46 square feet looks like per student and et cetera, et cetera. And feels that the Champions program and its numbers that were previous numbers could certainly be accommodated in that large Berklin School cafeteria. And obviously the outside playground, et cetera. We would not be using the pool at this point. They have talked about that in the future, but we're not going to touch that right now. We're going to try to run the program as their standard program.
Mr. Oakley, you had a question?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wondered, I've been kind of lagging a little bit, so I apologize if I just wondered, I've been kind of lagging a little bit, so I apologize if this has been gone over already, but this seems like a, an opportunity to, to see how things may go. And I wondered if there's any sort of focus by the local public health officer or anything like that on tracking how, any new infections or any, any spread of existing infections that we might be privy to, not necessarily specific people's names, obviously, but that would help us to make decisions when it comes time to reopen.
And I would say that all of this, Rich, through, through you, Mr. Chair, all of this is, will be vetted through the, our local health agent. He's been very cooperative with us, he's been very honest with us, we've dealt with him on, on, on all matters and will deal with him on this too in regards to the specific requirements that he brings forward. But all of the requirements that are sort of dictated by some of the information you have in the handbook is basically vetted through the Board of Health at the state level and the CDC, et cetera. So, but it's, it's that Massachusetts Child and Youth Serving Programs reopening approach for minimum requirements for health and safety. And those are dictated by the state and obviously I would think that the Board of Health here in town would be, if we meet those, then he would be, he would be okay with it. So, but we'll definitely get his stamp of approval.
Any other questions? Then with that, Sarah, you know, I would go on and move on with Champion and let them do what they need to do to proceed.
Thank you.
Um, Sarah, I'm sure Sarah will be in touch with them tomorrow. Thanks, Sarah. And as we move on here to another program, we have a couple more programs that involve some, some form of summer programming in our schools. And the first, I would invite Carolyn Lyons, our Director of Pupil Personnel Services, into the meeting and she's going to talk about extended school year program, something that has caused her great fits in the last couple of months here as we planned for the summer. It's, it's great consternation, there's been, again, from the state level, there's been a lot of wishy-washiness, if you will, in the words of Charles Schultz and Peanuts. And some, you're going to do this and you're not going to do this and it's going to be locally controlled, but wait a minute, it's not going to be locally controlled because the state's going to tell you what to do. And then, so, so I guess Carolyn can probably, you'll get the sense from Carolyn on where she's at and where we're at as a school system moving forward with the E S Y or Extended School Year Program, special needs. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you Superintendent Lynch. Before I begin, I did want to echo what I've heard others say tonight, especially with respect to Mr. Juvenoni. Nice of me to butcher that on your last meeting, wouldn't you say? Many of them, sorry, it's been a long day. I did want to thank you. I, I think that the public doesn't always understand how thankless public work can be. And, you know, I sit here with you and I have for several years now and I wanted to thank you for the support you've always given the PPS Department, which admittedly can be, you know, a tricky conversation point. It tends to cost a lot of money and it doesn't always translate. You've always got out of your way to understand that. So I really did want to express my deep thanks and gratitude. You've just been very helpful and very supportive. It's made my job easier and that of my department. So with that, before I talk to you, Bodhi, E S Y, I did want to take also a minute to thank all of the special educators, general educators, related service providers, paraprofessionals, who really did on the fly kind of recreate the schoolhouse outside of the schoolhouse this year. And I'm really impressed and amazed at how flexible everybody was. And I can tell you as a non-resident in Middleborough that, you know, objectively, Middleborough did a really fantastic job, in my opinion, with meeting the needs of students. And that has everything to do with the deeply held commitment by our professionals. So I wanted to take a minute to acknowledge that and then also the work of our special education and general education parents who really jumped in to help facilitate instruction for their children at a moment's notice. So I wanted to say thank you to those communities because I think it's really important that we acknowledge it as an organization. So that said, extended school year. As you know, I've kind of told you before, I've had regular and ongoing meetings with the E S E on this particular topic. And, you know, Superintendent Lynch is exactly right. The state has been very far from clear about what they wanted us to do until fairly recently. They had been putting us off to a date in May where they told us they'd address E S Y. That date came and left in May without any specific guidance, which was very frustrating. You know, I know my CPAC and, and I met and I know they were waiting on that information as well. But what I can tell you is most recently, what the E S E has told school districts is to attempt to offer some amount of limited in-person services this summer. Now, just briefly, to draw a distinction between Champions and the E S Y program, the E S Y program is not a child. This is designed for students who experience substantial regression and we put services in place to slow that regression over the summer months. Okay? We also are looking at the population of students that are already identified by special education teams as the most vulnerable. So when the state told us you need to open in some sort of limited fashion, initially I was excited by that. I kind of thought, okay, this is great, you know, we can get, we can get another chance to meet our students' needs over summer months, that would be great. Except they didn't just say open up with limited in-person services, they said there are certain things you have to do before you can open. These obstacles have proven to be very significant in part because the state has failed to clarify what they want in these obstacles. So we'll go through them just briefly. Yes, they've asked us to dawn and purchase P P E, personal protective equipment. And that's, that's fine. We've, we've done that. Sarah Hickey and her team did an excellent job of putting in our order and I'm happy to tell you that, that our order's been placed. But there is no guarantee that we'll have that order by early July. And part of that's because every town in Massachusetts is placing these orders. So I'm effectively standing in line with everybody else who does this job in the state of Massachusetts and probably beyond. So that's the first obstacle. Once we get the equipment, we all need to have extensive, extensive training in the equipment and, you know, sanitization practices so that we can make sure our schoolhouses is safe for staff and students alike. We've asked repeatedly for, you know, some in-depth information about what type of training that might include. Certainly there's OSHA standards, certainly there's CDC guidelines, but if they're asking for very specific training, you know, we need a little bit more than just train your people. And as of today's meeting, they didn't have that information. They are working with D P H and they anticipate some level of guidance soon. Just as a reminder, it's June 18th and our program is slated to open on Tuesday, July 7th. That's really not a lot of time, particularly when you factor in that our, you know, we hire out for our E S Y program and those contracts have to start at a certain point in time, but they don't start today. They typically start right around the time that starts the program. The third issue is transportation and it's a significant one. As you all know, you cannot offer a student who's eligible for special education services, you can't offer them services and not transportation or a mechanism for actually receiving those services. You can't block the access and say, well, too bad, you know, you have parents that work, so you won't be able to access that. We, we don't have the luxury of taking that position. With social distancing guidelines and the guidelines that came out of the E E C, it's still unclear how many children were allowed to fit on our transportation equipment. And we are facing the situation that out-of-district students are also in placements that are going to open up in some type of phased system. So there's less equipment to go around and that's going to create a major issue. The state's answer to us was please ask your parents to transport their children. And that's just is a very unsatisfactory answer to me. And while certainly that's, that's wonderful and in families who can do that, that, that would be wonderful, but that's a very inequitable position to take and I think it puts parents in an uncomfortable and tough position after experiencing a very tough semester. So, you know, I'm sensitive to that and above all, it's important that, you know, what we offer is real. The last issue is ultimately the changed conditions of the E S Y program because of social distancing, because of wearing P P E, because of some of the guidelines that are coming out on our use of air conditioning equipment specific to window units and freestanding units. You know, it's one thing to tell us to open, it's another thing to make us put children on hot buses and report to hot schools where they haven't been and wear restrictive equipment. You know, I have many, many families and it's not just unique to the special ed community, many families who are concerned about their child's ability to wear equipment properly, particularly face masks. We fully recognize and anticipate that many are going to struggle with that. And just so you know, you cannot force a child to wear equipment, nor would we want to. What we're seeing in terms of guidance is that our people would dawn additional equipment to protect themselves in the event and the inevitability when, when a child cannot safely and appropriately wear that equipment. So once all of those conditions are met, we can open. And what concerns me is the amount of time that's elapsed here and the amount of time that may continue to elapse. So what I communicated with my families just today is that what I'd like to present is a hybrid format E S Y program this summer, where certainly I would like to begin the week of July 6th and I'd like to offer remote learning opportunities for the duration of our six-week program. That's what we promised our families, I think that's what they're entitled to. And I think it's important that we make good on that offer. When the time permits, if we are able, I would love to safely and appropriately open our doors. Unfortunately, I'm not sure what that date is. I'm fairly confident that if we don't have training by the end of the school year, that I won't be able to open the doors on Tuesday, July 7th, as I intended, because I'm going to need time to train people and probably read the guidance around the training. Interestingly, the state hasn't released its final guidance on E S Y despite issuing this mandate and they anticipate getting it out sometime in the week of June 22nd. So that would give us less than two weeks to turn that around if we planned to open in the capacity that they're saying. So it's funny because I've heard you guys talk about unfunded mandates before. This is slightly different where it's not an unfunded mandate, it's just a really irrational mandate to ask us to do this. What I've communicated to my families is that the health and safety of not just our students and families, but also staff are, is really the most important thing. And while it's of course important to open, I don't want to risk anybody's safety in rushing to do so. What I can tell you is that the state also asked us, they basically said, you may not be able to serve your entire community through an in-person experience. So the special ed coordinators and I sat down and we examined every single student eligible for E S Y. What we ultimately did was we prioritized our most vulnerable lawyer, lawyers, our most vulnerable learners, our students who are, who have struggled with remote learning and would struggle the most in returning back to school. And we've also prioritized our youngest learners. It is our position that students who are younger and littler will understand and navigate this change less well than students who are older, who've had the benefit of years of not just E S Y, but years of going to school in the format that we've all known in. So that's what we're doing at this point in time. I can tell you that in students that are in our full program, E S Y, and students grades pre-K through grade eight, we are extending some amount of limited in-person for students in grades nine through our post-grad. I'm asking that those programs stay virtual for the summer, along with students who are eligible for tutoring. And the reason I chose tutoring to stay virtual is because we already know that the students who are eligible for tutoring services are less, less significantly in need than students who attend our full program. So we really did prioritize our, our most vulnerable learners, our kids with the most significant disabilities and our youngest learners who are going to struggle the most, which is consistent with the guidance that the state provided. So I'm confident in this plan to the extent that, you know, as long as we continue to take measured steps, then, and we are able to open safely, then we will, then we will certainly do that. I'm in the process of creating an 11-chapter manual consistent with the E E C guidelines. That will include an entire cleaning plan, the transportation plan, a plan for handling sick staff and students, for the isolation and discharge of sick students and staff. My consultation with the Board of Health as I've been in touch with our local health agent, I've had conversations with him, tried to gauge, you know, I want to make sure that whatever we're doing is not inconsistent with what the town of Middleborough would like us to do, which factors in our own numbers. A plan for safe vendor deliveries, a plan for program closure in the event of exposure, a plan for the administration of medications, plan for coordination of space and facilities, and lastly, my plan for communicating with families. This has been, out of all of the chapters, the most important one to me. I know families are really thirsty for concrete answers right now and I don't blame them. And it's been very trying and very frustrating to sit in these meetings and not be able to deliver a simple yes or no to families. I think they've earned that much and that part is something I've personally struggled with because there aren't, there don't seem to be a lot of yes, no answers right now. So in the absence of that, I do what I know best, which is to make a plan and make sure that we systematically follow the plan. So that's what I would consider my update on E S Y. If you have any questions, I would invite those.
Anyone have questions on E S Y? Mr. Rowe, I know you had a question right ahead, my friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. How many students attend the summer program usually annually? I know it's a special program run over the summer in conjunction with other things like Champions and sports clinics, which we're going to hear later. So how many kids usually on a, on a normal year, which this is not, would attend?
We're roughly 100 students and that includes, because we function out of the Memorial Early Childhood Center. That includes students in pre-K all the way through post-grad and includes students who receive itinerant services, just like speech language or occupational therapy over the summer, and then also our full program students. So typically that's where we are. We already know that the ratios are going to be capped at 12 bodies, 12 humans, in a room at any, at any given time. So just to give you an idea, with our earliest learners, you know, there, there's no such thing as putting 10 pre-K students with two adults. Those ratios are closer to one to one. So you're looking at, if you were going to put six people in a room, six of those would be students and six of those would be adults. We still have to maintain social distancing while in the room. So there's major configuration that has to go. What I asked from our families today was to let me know if there are any families that are already hearing this or saying, thanks, but no thanks, we're going to, we're going to continue with remote learning, but we're not going to take you up on your, on this offer of limited in-person. Once I have an idea of what our real numbers will be, it will be very informative for us to see how many classrooms we're operating out of and really logistically how this is going to work. But any, the short answer to your question is about 100.
Mr. Young, you're on mute still. I was asking Greg if you had another question, so that worked out perfectly. Anybody else have any questions? Senior Caroline, again, thank you. I mean, you're going through something completely different, completely unusual and time and time again, you rise to the occasion. So I think from all of us, we really appreciate what you're doing. We recognize it's a bumpy road. We also recognize to all of us that this is going to cost you additional dollars just based on what you're going to have to put together. So we appreciate it and understand it and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. As we move on to a, a third summer program that we need to discuss tonight, we've talked about it before, pre-COVID, if you will, and I would invite Ryan Sylvia, our athletic director, back to the stage here, if you will. And he wants to talk about his modified program that he's putting forth, for the proposal for modification and trying to, again, a similar program that we're going to try to get the nod from the school committee to, to move forward, checking all the boxes which are required from the health department, CDC, et cetera. So, Mr. Sylvia, welcome to the meeting and, and you're on.
Hi, everybody. Can, can you guys hear me okay?
Thanks, Ryan, we can hear you.
Thanks, Ryan, we can hear you.
Okay, great, uh, first, just, uh, just to echo again, I know, uh, Mr. Gianfinoni, thank you for your service and for your support of athletics over the past. Uh, three years that I've been here. Uh, always enjoyed those conversations on the sidelines of the games and the track and things like that. Um, and then also just thank you to everybody else all the way down the line. School committee, superintendent, administration, faculty, staff, everybody with getting us through this situation and. And the ongoing situation we're in, so thank you for that. Um, so my presentation tonight is on our summer program, I think the last time we talked about this was in February. Where the school committee approved a, a summer program that was very similar to what we've done in the past. Um, and what we're looking to do now is based on the guidelines from the state. Um, open that summer program with restrictions. Uh, we are not under, we are not necessarily a, a youth serving program, so we don't have to, uh. Go, we are a youth serving program, but we don't have to follow all of the details. Uh, within that document that was released from the E E C. Um, most of them we do. And, and I've been in contact with the Health Department and a couple of the inspectors within the Middleborough. Health Department, uh, and they've given me a lot of guidance on how to develop some plans and protocols so that we can open. Uh, which I, I've actually been working on right up until. Uh, this meeting and we shared that in the Dropbox, so I don't expect that everyone's able to review all of that before this meeting. Um, and I apologize if there's a couple of typos in there, but, uh, we've also. We've also worked, or I've also worked with, uh, some other local. Uh, school districts that are making the decision on whether or not they're going to open their summer programs, uh, their strength and conditioning. Things like that, uh, and some are making that decision to go forward with it and some are not. Um, so, as I go through, I just want to kind of highlight some of the, um, points in the, in the document that I've shared. Uh, basically, um, I think we have to be committed to providing programs to keep our, our participants safe. Um, first and foremost, but also just in a, uh, the socialization aspect and giving our students, um, something to do this summer. Uh, outside of their homes, uh, and to keep them active. Anything that we do put in place is subject to change and modification, uh, based on those objectives. Um, so we would have to do all of, you know, many of the same things that the champions program would have to do in terms of. And, and this, uh, with the E S Y program, very similar. Uh, we have to do screening and monitoring of every, of every, uh, student that comes into one of our programs in the summer. Um, and, and that involves, you know, basically, setting up a screening area. At the facility, whatever facility is being used and basically, it would be, uh, our turf and track. Uh, and the Middleborough High School gym, potentially, uh, the elementary school and the pool. Uh, as we go down, we have to do a verbal screening or questionnaire on a daily basis. Uh, that really answers two questions, do you have symptoms, uh, of COVID-19 and listing the symptoms and then. Um, have you been exposed in the past 14 days? So that's something that has to happen on a daily basis. Um, there's basically two ways to do that, one is, is a actual questionnaire where the, the parents that are dropping off their child. Uh, checks off no, signs the form daily. Um, that's something that would have to happen. Um, the other option is an electronic version, which is similar to what you would see in a hospital. Um, for anyone who's working in, in that scenario, they have, um, through a Google form, a questionnaire. The link is live, they, and updated daily, so prior to coming into work, they hit, they fill out the, um. They answer the two questions, hit submit and it populates a form so we can see everybody that says, no, I haven't had any symptoms and no. Um, I have, uh, not been in contact with anyone that, that's had, uh, the virus. Um, so that's, that's basically the most complicated aspect of the screening and the whole process. Um, from there, it comes, it comes down to other, um. You know, other considerations like hygiene, hand washing, uh, physical distancing, face coverings. Um, we don't necessarily have to provide the face coverings, we have to have, uh, we have to. Encourage them and we have to offer them if someone wants one and doesn't have one with them. Um, the plan for this summer program would be to, rather than. Uh, the, the usual T-shirt that every participant gets, they would get a, a customized face covering, uh, when they start the program that. They would have to use and wash daily and, and bring back in. Uh, so, similar to some of the Middleborough agents', uh, face coverings you've seen already. Uh, part of the hand washing, hygiene and disinfecting, uh, is. Our custodial staff comes into play, I've been in contact with our facilities director and. Um, basically, within the, the timeframe of the clinics. Our custodial staff would be able to maintain, uh, the bathroom facilities and. Uh, cleaning of, of doorknobs and handles and things like that, uh, within their, their normal purview of their work, so it wouldn't be anything. Uh, too much different, other than just making sure that they plan for, for those programs when they're in place. Uh. So as far as what the program actually looks like and the management of the program. Um, but the first thing we'd be looking to do is have a strength and conditioning program. Uh, where we're, we're offering, uh, the new facility, the turf and the track. Um, to students in a limited capacity, so we have, uh, basically. Scheduled out groups on Mondays and Wednesdays and scheduled out groups on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Each group would be, uh, a group of 20. And we would have two coaches, two strength and conditioning coaches, leading conditioning activities. Um, the, the, the conditioning activities would have use of some equipment such as, um. Pyometric boxes, speed ladders, uh, medicine balls. Um, and there would be some potential sharing of equipment between groups that would have to be cleaned in between. But in the immediate sense of actually using, uh, you know, going through the exercises and activities, everyone would have their own equipment. Uh, they wouldn't be sharing it within there. Um, so what it amounts to for the strength and conditioning piece is about 120 participants. Um, and again, if you look at the budget, uh, the kind of sample budget that I sent out, it's adjusted a little bit, but basically. Um, groups would meet two, two times per week and we'd have an 8:00 AM, a 9:00 AM and a 10:00 AM. Um, for Monday and Wednesday, and then 8:00 AM, a 9:00 AM and a 10:00 AM. Uh, for Tuesday and Thursday, with 20 participant limits in each group because of the two coaches. Now, with the space that we have on the field and the track, we could have potential to increase those group numbers if we added coaches. Um, and we could have, uh, potential in later phases from the state guidelines, uh, to increase the numbers within groups. Uh, and that could come out as soon as, you know, the end of the month or, or, you know, early in July, so. Um, another piece of this that would be a change from the original proposal would be. Uh, an increase in the cost to the participants, uh, our, our typical cost is $85 per clinic. Whether it was the strength and conditioning clinic that ran all summer. Uh, or individual sport clinics that, um. That ran just for four days, uh, 12-hour clinics over the course of four days, three hours a day. Uh, so my kind of proposal would be to go from 85 to 100. Um, and that would just be to give us a little bit of flexibility if a, if a, if a group did not fill completely. Um, then we're not, we're not going to work in a, in a deficit in terms of the amount of money that we have to pay our coaches. Uh, and, and the cost to run the program. Um, so. Just see if I'm hitting everything here. So that's basically, that's basically the summary of what we would be trying to do. Um, I'm sure there are some questions and, um. Maybe some specific questions and details that I might have missed, uh, across the six-page document that I have here.
Um, Ryan, my, my first question is, sort of, I understand that as constituted now. Uh, for example, if you were, if you were running a soccer club. You couldn't run, um, scrimmage, you would just be running drills currently?
Correct, that's a, that's a great question because, um, the hope is, and I know I've talked, you know, with some other recreation departments as well, is that. Um, the schedule will change from what it initially was, so the hope would be to bump all of our team. Sport clinics to the end of the summer, late July, early August. Uh, with the expectation that if things continue to improve. Uh, with the virus and the guidance from the state in future phases. Uh, it is anticipated that we could have some type of scrimmaging, shared equipment, things like that.
And the second, uh, if I can add one more question, Ryan. When we first had this discussion in February. Um, well, actually, we had discussion a little later. Um, right when we weren't sure if we were going to have a spring season. And one of the things that we wanted to do was, that we haven't done in the past. Is offer the opportunity for graduates to be able to participate, especially if they were getting ready for something in the fall. Uh, can we do that, or I think in some respects, it's been capped at the age of 18. Am I wrong, or I'm just throwing that out there for the question?
Um, I'd have to, I'd have to kind of look into it a little bit more, my first. My initial response to that is that I think we would want to limit whatever we're offering to our current students. Um, I know that's not something that probably our senior, seniors who missed out on the spring season want to hear. And, and I'd have to look into the possibility more of how we would, how we would manage that. Um, I think if, if at all, it would have to be something where it would, uh, those groups would be limited to graduates only, we wouldn't be mixing the. The current students with the, of those that have graduated.
And do other people have questions? Uh, Mr. Rowe.
Hi, I saw Meg popped one up here in the chat that, um, is similar to mine. Um, you mentioned that your guidelines are not exactly as the. As the E Y S or as champions, like they're similar, but they're different. Um, I know that a lot of the youth programs have come out with national guidelines for soccer, baseball and things like that. Which guidelines are you restricted to, is it just the town, the state, like what? Like, I'm, I'm impressed that you're able to put this together and get something rolling, that's awesome for the kids. Um, but what are, what, what are your restrictions and who is giving you those restrictions?
So, we're kind of a modified version of the minimum, minimum requirements for health and safety, so it's the same document that we're working off of for E S Y. And, um, and champions. Except we don't, because we're, our program only runs four days a week and the clinics are, uh, limited times, so they're basically. Three hours or less, either one hour or three hours. We don't fall into the, the category of a recreational camp for children, so we don't require the same exact inspection. Um, so it's, it's similar to, um, I mean, there's a checklist for youth programs that's kind of a supplement to that larger document. Um, but we're almost similar to, uh, local businesses that would be opening. Uh, a combination of what those guidelines look like with the minimum requirements for, um, for health and safety. Um, and I made sure I, I checked that specifically, uh, with our Health Department. Um, and really, it ultimately, it comes down to a lot of the same stuff, except we don't have to provide transportation, we don't have to. Um, we don't have to have any kind of food service, uh, guidelines or anything like that. Um, I mean, we have to make sure that students are bringing their own water bottles and only using their own water and, and those types of things. Uh, but it's just a little less strict in that sense. Um, we also have to have a written plan, which is, uh, on file, but does not have to be shared with the Board of Health. Um, it just has to be on file in the event that there's an outbreak or something of that nature, so. Uh, that's something that, uh, what I shared with you, uh, today would be, would be edited slightly and then, um, on file. And I actually was planning on kind of reviewing it with our local Board of Health, uh, beforehand anyway, just to say, hey, how does this look? Um, and, and I think what we have is pretty solid because it's, it's, um. It's kind of been a shared working document that I've worked with some other districts and, and recreation departments on.
Thank you, Ryan, and I know this has been a difficult spring and you're still uncertain about the fall, so thank you for putting this together for our kids, I hope it all goes well.
Other questions for Ryan, Mr. Oakley?
Sure, uh, I'm, uh, full disclosure, stealing this from, um, from Linda on Facebook who asked the question. Uh, it's something I'm interested in as well. Um, I, I think Linda asked, um, is there anything that will be done for people who knowingly falsify when, uh, signing the forms and. It's a really difficult thing to know, but, um, I suppose just like any, any other establishment that's offering something, which I'm so excited that you're offering something. Um, people should probably know that if they knowingly send their, um, you know, their kid in there with, with symptoms, that they're risking the program shutting down. I'm guessing that's the, that's the risk, but can you talk about that a little bit, Ryan?
Yeah, I mean, if, if they're, you know, we, we have to just hope that people are being honest with us when they're responding to those questions and if there is. Uh, you know, in a worst case scenario, an outbreak or, or we do, uh. Find out that something like that's happened, the immediate response is to contact the local Board of Health and start the tracing efforts. Um, that have been used in other situations. Um, and that's why, uh, part of our requirements is collecting, uh, contact information. A lot of the things are things that happen naturally anyway, so we're collecting contact information for everyone that registers for our program. Health information for everyone that registers for our program. Very similar to how we, uh, or exactly how, uh, we would collect information for athletics registration or summer programs that we've done in the past, so. And I would think it becomes, um, you know. Taking into account confidentiality, sharing that information with only the people that need to know, like the Department of Health.
Ryan, a related question that came to us on Facebook from, uh, Teresa Farley. Um, in regards to doing the checklist when you drop your child off. What happens if there, so what happens if the parents driving multiple kids in the neighborhood to the, to the program or. Kids are driving themselves or kids are showing up on their bikes or something like that?
So that's why, that's a great question, um, and so basically, if we had a. Uh, a paper form that had to be checked off and signed by a fam, by a parent or guardian. That parent or guardian would have to be the one who drops them off at the program. Um, that can, that could cause some potential issues, which is why I'm, I've actually been working with another town that's looking at doing. The electronic version similar to what they have at the hospitals where if that's filled out, if that, if that form is filled out electronically. And they have the, um, it basically sends an email right back to the parent. Um, of the confirmation that they haven't shown any symptoms or been in contact. And that email is what the student shows when they come in to check in for the program each day. Uh, it's like their pass to get into the program. Um, so, that would be the ideal situation if we're able to implement that type of system. But if not, uh, I would think that the parent would have to be the one to drop them off each day.
Brian, sorry.
Mr. Chair. Sorry, uh, the question that I would have is, would, would we be looking at strenuously encouraging. Parents to purchase a pair of washable workout full finger gloves for these students to come out here? Just in case, I mean, it's something that if they're wearing a pair of gloves, they're passing the medicine ball, they're, they're sharing some of these pieces. They get done, they peel them off, they can wash them, next day come back, they have, when they wash their mask, they can wash their gloves. So, I know we can't, we could require, but I wouldn't want to require it, it's just something we could stretch. I mean, for $12 or $13, they could have a nice little set of workout gloves that you could still work upon if you had to.
Yeah, I think, I think initially, um, we're not, we're not going to be sharing any equipment and we can encourage the use of. Of, uh, gloves of, of any kind and encourage them to get something that they can use, um, on a more permanent basis. Um, but it's, it's like, uh, everything with the situation that we're in, it's, it's fluid and, and as we get guidance, if. If we can have a basketball clinic at the end of July where we're actually allowed to do scrimmaging. Um, you know, it's going to look a little different, it's going to be a lot of hand washing and hand sanitizing before everybody walks in. Um, if there's not, if we're not allowed to scrimmage, there's going to be drill work where everybody has their own ball and that's the only ball you use and. Um, there is risk involved in all of this, there's, there's risk of, of students and, and. And participants being in contact with each other and coaches and everybody involved, but. Uh, to me, it's, it's our job to do the best we possibly can to limit the amount of contact and, and keep people away from each other. Uh, you know, six feet apart and, and follow all the guidelines that have been issued. Um, I think that's.
I was just, I was just wondering, because, uh, you have the workout gloves that, you have lifting gloves, usually the fingers cut off, I, I'd use those riding a bike. They also have them full fingered, I, I've been wearing full fingered on the job site, um, it's one of those things that. Everyone's trying to do everything to keep themselves safe, so. And, uh, no, I think that this is a great program and my kids have participated in the past and. It's awesome, it's just an awesome program and I appreciate that you're working so hard to make this happen this year.
Just one, uh, one other piece that I know wasn't clear, I, I think I saw one of the questions. I, I think I saw one of the questions, the dates of the program. Initially, we had planned to start June 29th with the strength and conditioning program. The sport clinics were put, were already starting after July 4th. So if, if this is something that we want to move forward with and our, our school committee wants to move forward with, I would, I would recommend we start the strength and conditioning piece on Monday, July 6th. And that's really more for our, that's the only clinic that we actually offer for our high school age students. All the rest are geared towards elementary school and middle school, all the sport clinics. So we'd get them going a little bit earlier. And then again, the sport clinics, that schedule still has to be determined with the coaches, most of which I've, I've already confirmed are, are ready and willing to, to get going and they're kind of itching to get things going. But those, those dates would just have to be confirmed.
Other questions for Ryan? You know, really unlike the other ones, the chair would really entertain emotions to support this program because this is different than we have put out in the past. And in my mind, Ryan's done a lot of work to put this together. So I would look for support from the committee.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Do I hear a second?
Second?
Discussion. I'll wait till everyone comes up. Any discussion hearing now? Mr. Jimino?
Hi.
Mr. Rowe?
Hi.
Mr. Stevens?
Hi.
Ms. Janess?
Hi.
Mr. Oakley?
Hi.
And the chair goes aye, thank you. So back to Ryan quickly. Sean, was there any other questions that we had for Ryan?
I'll just add, Mr. Chair, if it's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
There's, there's still a lot of work to be done to get this in place and ready to go for, for July 6th. I'm confident that we'll be able to do it. The, the two coaches that we have are, are ready to go for the strength and conditioning piece. There's, I'm working on a newsletter through the Smore app, similar to the communication you see from our superintendent and principal, that's going to go out as far as athletics update in general, but more, but really focused on the summer programs and what we're going to be trying to do. So just kind of wanted to let people know that. It's been, I think the athletics department has been a little quiet since, since March and, and because we've just been kind of waiting and following the guidance from, from the rest of the school, you know? So that communication's coming out and, and just be on the lookout for it.
Thanks a lot, Ryan. We appreciate all your help.
And Mr. Chair, I want to move on with my agenda this evening, my report. And we've obviously had four administrators already on my report. And how about a fifth? I would invite Mr. Paul Brannigan in, onto the stage, if you will, the video remote stage. He has the Middleboro High School School Improvement Plan that he and the school council at Middleboro High School have prepared. And he'd like to discuss this and propose this for approval this evening. So welcome, Mr. Brannigan. Thank you for your patience and, and I see you're in your office.
I am.
The lights are always on at the high schools.
That is right.
So Brian, before Paul goes and Paul, before you go, I do want to mention one thing that I think's important. Mr. Brannigan invited the superintendent and I to participate this past Monday and Tuesday into individual private graduations, primarily for families that could not attend what will be our August 1st graduation. For example, in one case, the young man, Joe Ricker, will be in the military at that time and will be unable to attend. It was very nice. I think a lot of those families really expected that their child was going to walk in, be handed the diploma by Paul and walk out. And that wasn't the case. So Paul, I want to thank you for all your work you did putting that together. I want to thank the superintendent too, because that was a lot of fun to be at and be a part of.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the both of you for being there and, and sharing some kind words to our graduates. It was very nice. So thank you very much. And before I get, begin, I just want to thank Mr. Dean Avoni for everything. So just having the opportunity to work with you over the last years in this role has been really just, just an amazing experience. Your high expectations, your guidance, your love for this town and its kids. I'm just very deeply grateful for just what you have done for our schools. And most importantly, just in most recent, just watching you and learning from you on this high school building project has really been quite something. So to see this come to completion is going to be really quite exciting. So just thank you for everything and thanks for all your support over the years. It's meant a lot. I just want to share with you our school improvement plan and, and hope for your consideration for its approval. We have had a really great year up until we had literally just voted on our final draft of our plan the days before schools closed. So we were quite lucky that we were able to get this completed. I think it's important to note that we did a survey back in October. So a lot of what you're going to see is either consistency of building in some of our goals that are ongoing, but also some really great feedback from close to 300 families at the high school who participated in that survey back in October of really what was their level of satisfaction of teaching and learning and the community and safety and all the aspects of our high school. So I just want to thank our families for being a part of that. And of course, the school council for their guidance and their leadership during the past many months. There are 11 goals in this year's plan. There was 10 goals from when we closed in March. And then with the school council's final meeting, that we had a remote meeting to just go over that last goal, I added an 11th goal, which was a COVID-19 response plan. So I just want to take you through very briefly these goals, if I may. The first goal in the school improvement plan is an ongoing goal that you have seen before and it's really our constant work in regards to our leveling practices. It's calibration and it's work in terms of our students being able to move from one level to the next. And really, how does that all play itself out? And it's really an important work with guiding our middle school students up to the high school. So part of the work in the plan is, is how are we articulating what are our academic levels? And, and as parents are making decisions, as you know, at the high school, we have a student-driven schedule. So as middle school parents are making these decisions for their child, what does that actually mean? So a lot of our leveling practices is really going to revolve around actually, what are we doing with our middle level students as they're making these very big decisions as well? And ultimately also beginning that calibration work of our freshman academy, that this was part of the work we had planned on doing over the course of this year and in the spring semester, but ultimately that was, that was delayed a bit. So in that leveling goal, we're really excited about continuing that good work. In our curriculum goal, this is always a goal in our plan because I, it's an important aspect of our school. The curriculum is constantly being renewed and revised and, and in, in growing. So that is a goal that is a part of our plan again. You'll notice the fact that it's really how we're using data to drive our curriculum practices. It's really also what we're really excited by, and this is really a compliment to Dr. Gates, that in the fall semester, one of our goals, if you remember, was really creating this curriculum renewal plan. That was one of our recommendations out of NIESK. And through the leadership of Melanie, she was able to really put together an unbelievable comprehensive renewal plan. And that will now be launched officially this fall. So we're really quite excited by actually now having all of our content areas in a kind of pathway of really this kind of revise and research and renew. And we're really quite excited by the work that, that renewal plan will do for our curriculum throughout the entire building. And also it's just important to note that we decided as a council to make sure that we were adding an essential skill. So where it's applicable in certain curriculum areas of adding in skills such as social emotional learning, leadership, teamwork and collaboration, communication, problem solving, work and ethic and grit and perseverance. And really some of these what we call soft skills, but we really looked at much more importantly as an essential skill. So we're going to see really how can our, how can our content areas begin to weave those skills into really their curriculum and their instructional practices as well. In goal number three, it's an, it's an ongoing journey for us of really the engagement of online learning. Boy, do we have a lot of that this, this spring. But ultimately it's really looking at our platforms of assessment. As you know, we're an edge elastic school. So a lot of our content areas are engaging in edge elastic. So it's really about how are we analyzing that information that's coming in and how are we using it and how are the kids engaging with it? And ultimately, as you know, now at the high school with high stakes MCAS testing, the fact that it's all online now. So it's really making sure the fact that our kids have that skill to be able to take that step in those high areas as well. It's also looking at our grading policies. This was supposed to be a goal that would be ongoing over the course of this year. It's a, it's a continued goal as we move into the fall, as well as also looking at our review of midterms and final exams. As you know, we're on the verge of starting a brand new schedule in the near future. And because of that, it's important that we go back and really look at what are those practices of those particular exams? And goal number four in our improvement plan, this is one that we're really quite excited by, but it, it got cut short a little bit. In the full day professional development day in March, our faculty engaged in a full day professional day that I had the good honor of being able to facilitate for them. And it was really about rethinking teaching and learning at the high school. And it really was a real kind of interlook at really what we are doing as, as a staff and really where do we want to see our school go? And it really begins the foundational work of really what can teaching and learning look like in the new high school? And we started to be kind of the narrative of our call to action as we were going to begin to really say to our community is that this is our call to action of what teaching and learning will look like at Middleboro High School. And really a common language of what our shared beliefs and, and of what teaching and learning, learning is. And then ultimately out of that was going to be the beginning of our strategic plans. As you know, as for, as long as I've served as the principal of the high school, I've always shared with you for your review and your blessing of the accountability plans that we have always written. But as we have evolved as a school, that these accountability plans, as you know, are only one-year plans. So we decided collectively as a faculty to no longer do an accountability plan, but to really be more strategic. So what we're starting to work on and what we were hoping to do this spring is to begin the work on creating these three-year strategic plans in every single content area in the school. And so that is going to be our, our earnest in the fall, but we're, that is the goal for us, that we will have these comprehensive plans as we move. Goal number five is continued focus on transition, really looking at a formal timeline and program, working with the, with Mrs. Latander at the Nichols Middle School to be able to put together a plan of when the students begin the eighth grade in September, what do we, what becomes our entry point? And then really working with students and families throughout the rest of the year, ultimately welcoming them at the high school at the Start Strong program in August. It's also looking at doing a parent and guardian survey to the eighth grade families to see really what are their needs and what are they looking for? To allow us to have some feedback from them as we're moving forward as well. The continued work with our aims program and the transition, transition into life skills and into, for our postgraduate students. But then we're also beginning to really look at transition from high school to college and really high school to the real world. So what does that mean? And so really that's going to be a task for us in the next up, in the upcoming school year of really collecting some data from our alumni to say, how well did we prepare them for the next steps in their own lives? In goal number six, it is really our school counseling department. One thing you're going to note is, is the fact that as we move into the new high school, the word guidance department is no longer going to be part of our vocabulary. And it's really beginning the change of really what is called school counseling, which on a national level, that is the real kind of definition now of what we know as the guidance department. So it's really exciting work of the rebranding and the redefining of really what our guidance department is. And that's going to be part of the work is really this kind of change of the narrative of really now our school counseling department. It will be engaging our curriculum accommodation plans. This was a project we started working on in the fall to implement in the spring. And ultimately we will be doing that in the fall of this year. It's be continuing the research and the work we've been doing with our ACE program, which is our in-school suspension room, and really transferring that into much more of a transition enrichment space, especially as we transition into the new building. But really two things out of this area that we're really excited by. One is a formal communication plan to families. It was really quite amazing in the survey data that we got, that families were, as saying they didn't really know what was going on with what their children were doing in college and career planning. But yet we have such a comprehensive plan for our kids that we engage within the building, but it became evident that we don't tell anybody that we're doing it. So part of really what our charge is going to be is really how do we then convey all of that information to our families of really what our students are doing beginning in the ninth grade, right up into the 12th grade? And then also our road to, road to the future planning, which is really taking those building blocks of grade nine curriculum, 10, 11 and 12 of our college and career planning. And lastly, we've made a commitment to put a focus on really exploring and giving students an opportunity to really see and research the trades. So for students who have no intentions of going on to college their high school graduation, what resources are we providing for them to be able to have access to the trades? And to be able to make sure the fact that they can get hooked into potentially a potential career as they move forward from us? You'll notice in, in goal number seven, it's the new high school schedule. To be quite candid, we had a whole plan that we had shared with you back in, in January. And that has been slowed obviously with school closure, but is still on target that we will launch the new schedule in the fall of '21. But because of that, there's an awful lot of work that needs to be done over the next many weeks and months as we get ready for that. And you'll see all of those as part of the target that by January of 2021, that the framework of the new high school schedule is done. Because we need to make sure that the student scheduling reflects the new schedule framework. So that will be in place as well. Also, goal number eight, a really exciting one. This has been an ongoing goal of just kind of the what-ifs and the long range. And now it's here and it's the move into the brand new high school. So it's really looking at the formal transition plan and that, I just want to thank Jim Hutchinson for his partnership because it has been tremendous working alongside him as we are beginning the process of identifying how do we move from this building into the new one? It's looking at a new program of studies, a new student handbook, as well as a professional development plan. There's a significant amount of work that's going to be needed to train teachers and all of the resources and technology and the, and just the use of that building. And to make sure we have that in place in earnest, to make sure we can do it in, in a logical manner. And then goal number nine is our ongoing work with NIESK. It's really fun to be able to say, we only have one more recommendation to meet and one more special progress report. And with one goal, which is basically they want an update on the new high school. And, and we're just really quite proud of the faculty of the high school for the work that they've done over the last many years with our accreditation process. And strangely enough, we will begin the launch of our 2024 planning for accreditation. We were supposed to begin with the vision of the graduate, which is a mandate of NIESK of the process. And that we were supposed to do that training in late March, early April. And ultimately that was canceled. So now we will be moving to do that in the fall, which we're quite excited by. And the last two goals really briefly, one is, goal number 10 is really an important goal of our school and of our school council. And that was really based upon cultural proficiency. It's the comprehensive work we need to be doing with our ELL population and our students, especially as that population is growing in our school. And making sure the fact that we have a really concrete structure in place to be able to work and to, and to guide these students as they make their way through the high school. Also looking at the intentional engagement of linking cultural proficiency to all curriculum areas in the high school. And also I think it is so timely, the commitment of the professional development work, staffing of ensuring a culturally responsive classroom and the training and unconscious and implicit bias in the classroom. And that will begin, we've already had this wonderful partnership with the Anti-Defamation League. And so we're really excited to be able to continue the work that we had started this year. We have a lot of work to do. But I think if we can start having these conversations as a faculty, and I know that our students are having the conversations as well, I think it will allow for us to take steps as a school collectively. And last but not least is this goal number 11, which is our COVID-19 response plan. It's just really putting together with the partnership with the district and it's the community of really making sure the fact that we have a formal integration plan when we move back to, into the high school in the fall, whatever that may look like. It's maybe looking at a formal remote plan to a hybrid, to a full engagement back in school. Looking at a social emotional plan for our students to make sure the fact that we're meeting those needs upon their return. And more importantly, they'd be beginning to explore actually what is called the power term, which we're not sure we want to do this yet. And it has to be some research over the summer. But to potentially look at the fact that we delayed the beginning of the fall term to make sure we can get all of our students back in the building in September, if it is to be. And to be able to work on actually building up some of those skills and to do some of that remediation we may need to be doing to then be able to start the entire building in earnest in brand new courses again in the, in a few weeks into the semester, to make sure the fact that we're all taking a step together. As we know that we've been out of school now for so long that to make sure that our students are acclimated and that we are able to do something together as a school community to make sure we can all take the step together. So I'd be happy to take any questions and, but that is our plan and I appreciate your consideration.
Any questions with Paul? Mr. Rowe, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brannigan, excellent work on this plan.
Mr. Bring an excellent work on this plan. It's thorough, it's thought out, it's great work again. Um, I do have a question um, regarding the the postponement of the building opening in February. Just out of curiosity, since you didn't mention midterms, finals, and power term and things like that, um, how does the new opening date line up with your midterms or your or the first semester or things like that? Does it actually make it easier where a semester ends, then you start fresh, or is it still off? Or is there anything calendar wise we can possibly do as a segue to something later?
Yeah, it's it's off. But you know, we were going to be really off anyway, because if we didn't have all that has happened this spring, our semester usually ends around the end of January. So we very possibly would have been moving into the building towards the end of semester one anyway. So I think whatever our schedule may look like or whatever is to come, that we would be strategic about when this semester ends and when the new one begins. Um, we would kind of keep as much normalcy as we can. The only thing that we need to be looking at now is is that in our program of studies that we have launched for 2020, 2021, is there some indication of new courses indicative of the new building? So we have to now begin working backwards a little bit to say, can we still run these this class and do some pre-work before you actually get into the school? And I'll give you an example. We have one of the courses that we are running in the art department that we have scheduled is the um, is working with clay. And that was because we were going to be in the building for the beginning of second semester potentially. So now we just have to go back and work and say, can we do some things in a few weeks of building and there it may be the more of a survey of the course until we move into the building to then begin to use the kiln and to be able to make sure we can do that. So there's just some of the calibration now that needs to be done with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Brian, you had a question? You're still on mute, Brian?
Sorry about that. I'll go back to the freshman academy piece. And when we were talking about the freshman academy, I remember implementing this going back six years, five years. One of the greatest things I think we we've really done, one of those really meaningful things that we could do and with the at with the teachers working on this and you guys was great. Are we still seeing those results? I know you're looking at it, so are we still seeing the results? I'm not going to be able to hear this next one until I won't be sitting at this table. I'll be sitting outside looking at all that freshman academy work for us still.
Well, and I think that's why we're looking at it again, um, Brian, is because we do need to go back and really do some heavy lifting with the with the program again. I think times have changed as well. I mean, when that academy was done, if you if you remember that it all revolved around a binder. And so that the students have to have a ring binder and it was all part of this organizational piece and it was very pen and paper and and notebook. And now with the one-to-one initiative, what we have found is is that the entire structure has changed and has become much more informal. And what we're finding is is that there's some advantageous sense to that of having a very informal program. But then at the same token, we're also finding that there's some essential skills that when they're coming into the ninth grade, that maybe we need to be doing a better job with or at least building and enhancing those skills. So by going back and doing some of the recalibration of the academy, especially now with the one-to-one, I think it is going to allow for really different looking kind of academy potentially, or just some of the foundational work and behaviors of really what the academy is. And if you know that for the academy and for our families at home, that the academy is not really a program, it's a it's a behavior. And it's really just a way our our ninth grade teachers interact and behave and what their goals are and their expectations. So there's some consistency across the entire building of all of our ninth grade classes.
Excellent. My that my next question or looking at the the plan, which when you talk about the academic level flow chart and looking down at middle school and talking to talking to parents, talking to students, to talk to parents in that middle school, um, coming up and having my kids go through this program, there are always those pieces of um, if if a student really wants a STEM education going off into college following as an engineer as I am in the engineering art field, they're really going to want to make sure they're doing certain things in the eighth, seventh, and eighth grade so that line themselves up. And this is just a great piece, which just dovetails back down to the middle school, which I when I saw that, I was like, yes, this is because and I always want a flow track for everything anyway, that's just my my piece. So I I want to thank you and whatever, hey, if I can help you with it, I will help you with it because I think that is the coolest thing. And then the NIASK, oh my God, it's already again. I I just it seemed like yesterday, but when you hit all those marks, that is awesome. And that tribute, that's a testimony to your team, your 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 everyone, everyone at the high school from uh, the teachers and your your uh, your staff, uh, custodians, cafeteria workers, um, I miss Pam, uh, but yeah, absolutely, everybody there, it's just phenomenal. And thank you.
I will say this, Paul, I'll be happy when we build the high school because NIASK will stop sending me those letters telling me while I'm doing a good job, I still haven't fulfilled the uh, promises of NIASK. So I'll be happy when that's over and done with.
Right.
Um, anyone else have any questions? Then seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept um, the report.
Brian, you have an only motion to accept the report as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, that requires a roll call, both. Brian Givernone.
Aye.
Greg Rowe.
Aye.
Meg Janess.
Aye.
Greg Stevens.
Aye.
Rich Oakley.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And again, we can't thank you enough, Paul, for your hard work. And please thank the members of your committee for the great job that they did. So with that, we'll continue with the superintendent's report.
I'm back. Hi, everyone. Uh, my next on my item, my report is uh, is school choice. And as you know, back in May, May night, I believe, you approved school choice for our school district. Um, what we had left to do was talk about numbers. Um, I'm comfortable with the same numbers we voted in last year, given our predictions for our populations in high school or otherwise. Um, I would give you a quick sort of a school choice report, so you sometimes wonder uh, where our children's school choice come from. And just to give you the the quick run, uh, we have one student from Bourne, we have three from Bridgewater, two from Brockton, four from Carver, one from East Freetown, one from Fall River, 13 from Lakeville, two from New Bedford, uh, two from Plymouth, one from Plimpton, one from Somerset, eight from Taunton, and seven from Wareham, for a total of 46 school choice students coming into our district. So um, we thank those people for choosing Middleboro. Uh, there's a reason they did it, um, and hopefully it's it's for all the good reasons. And and we do send a little bit over 50 students out. So uh, at one point when I came in, when we didn't have school choice really, where we had five positions at the high school senior level, um, the town, the net was we were losing a whole ton of money. Uh, there were 67, 68 students going out and nobody coming in, except that we had a couple uh, that were sort of grandfathered in and a couple that came in as seniors. So um, students had to wait till their senior year. And now we have students from kindergarten all the way up. Um, so it does balance the books with regard to that, and hopefully that number will continue to to shift and go in the other direction. Uh, we do have to watch enrollment, we know that. Uh, we have a high school that was approved, a new high school that was approved for approximately 720 students plus a 15% build out, which puts us in the above 830 range or 828 range. Um, and our our population for next year looks like it's going to be 809. And that includes uh, 16 or so, uh, or 18 or so school choice students who are sort of grandfathered in, uh, because once we allow them in, they they are ours. So the question is, I guess, do we want to keep the number at 30 at the high school? At the middle school, we have a current uh, enrollment of 785. And uh, next year, our enrollment should be about 749 with the fifth grade coming in and the eighth grade going out. Um, so we do have a current of 785 at Nichols and next year is predicted 749. Uh, and we do have about eight students or so who are signed up for school choice at Nichols Middle School next year. At the elementary level, we currently have 17. And uh, and we could go with certainly we could open it up for for three or four spots at the elementary if we continue with the number 20 at the elementary level. And kindergarten is always a a question mark in terms of where we stand, our registrations right now with with sort of confirmations and and conversations that Katie Goodine, our our specialist in that area has done. Uh, we we're looking at about a class of about 230 students, which puts our class size at about 20, maybe 21, 22, and slightly lower in our inclusion, special education classes. Um, so we're certainly comfortable with that numbers. Adding five would not tip the scales too much. And when you do that, you're you're basically sort of paying for an ESP, if you will, uh, because it does bring in uh, in excess of $250,000 a year to our district. And it does pay for, as the budget subcommittee and you all know, through the budget subcommittee and through discussions we've had, we are paying full-time faculty members with that money. Um, so school choice is valuable to the district. Uh, we often we have to temper it with with the reality that we're facing in terms of of our enrollment. And our enrollment can suit the same numbers we we had voted last year. Um, and uh, my recommendation would be that we keep the numbers at the same level, um, or possibly diminish them slightly. Uh, but at this point, uh, we're in good stand, hopefully, uh, to get those numbers up towards closer to 50 to sort of balance that out, the in and the out. So any questions or comments? And this is a discussion the board has to take and a vote you have to take tonight, you know, hopefully, um, so that we can then the last week of June and and which is contained in our policy that we would have a lottery if necessary and would open up school choice. And with the amount of slots that we had available based on the numbers that we have. So any questions, please let me know. And and again, it does require a vote on your part so that I can report to the state uh, exactly how many numbers in each grade that we have available. And that's reported, that's a sort that's a sort of a central directory that the state maintains. Uh, we would certainly advertise on our websites and make it clear to those folks. We have a lot of folks who have indicated an interest, um, probably about 12 or so that we know of that that have called and and are looking forward to perhaps a spot in the Middleboro Public Schools. So uh, I'll stop talking so that you might discuss.
Mr. Givernone, I saw you had your hand up.
Yep. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I want to thank you for looking at the kindergarten. I I always worry about the kindergarten um, levels and and I know you do too as as a former principal at a at you've done it all, Mr. List Lynch. So I appreciate you looking at that because that's one of my big fears is that I don't want to see those numbers go way too high. Um, and then the other thing is is their grandfather for the next 12 years after that, um, right up through graduations, if they so choose to stay with us. And then all of a sudden, we have these, if we have the 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 big expansion that we could see this, I mean, we've we've had building quelled a little bit this this uh, spring because of what's gone on. Uh, but I appreciate that you you're looking at these numbers closely. When I got here, I think we had three school choice in and a whole bunch going out. And I always ask the question, why? I always got different answers as to why. Um, but I'm glad that we have opened up our 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 district to other communities and entire families that come to our community. Um, we we did that, I think, last year or the year before, we even opened it up so that we could actually have three siblings all within our district. And Rich, I think, Rich Young, you always say something about a school choice family, they are more invested in our district than sometimes even the people who live here. And I really do appreciate that that they're in our district and and uh, I would move that we uh, approve the same numbers we did last year, if that would work, as Brian Givernone, uh, making that motion.
Joe Harris, second.
Second.
Uh, for discussion, Mr. Oakley, you had a question, I believe?
Uh, no, actually, I was I was getting ready to make the motion.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Uh, Greg, please.
So, Mr. Lynch, you you mentioned that with our capacity of the new high school, with the extra 15%, you said it's 828, but and we're projecting an enrollment of 809 or something like that, is that what I heard you say?
Correct. Correct. Yep.
I think because of that, I I feel comfortable staying the course. I wouldn't want to expand it because we don't want to run into any, you know, limitations on that. But uh, so I feel comfortable with the uh, the current state.
Uh, Brian, there was a question on Facebook uh, from someone who asked, why do school choice get children get assigned to HBB instead of uh, MKG at the elementary school?
You know, it is a good question. Right now, our enrollment at HBB uh, is lower than the MKG. Uh, and it's an effort on our part as we allow students to come in from school choice uh, to go to the HBB because it just balances the classes and it balances the numbers. Um, so if we have class sizes at the, let's say, fifth grade, at let's say 21 or 22, and the the Berklin is is 19 or 20, uh, the five students that we might allow in each grade or four students in each grade would be assigned to the HBB um, to sort of balance those numbers out. And the same would be in effect if the MKG's numbers, for whatever reason, went down lower the following year. Uh, it's an effort on our part to balance those numbers. So it you you choose Middleboro, but you can't choose the school you go to. Um, obviously, the high school in Nichols are in the neck are are sort of standalones. But with regard to the grades one through five, if students are allowed in, those students will go to whatever school has the lower uh, enrollment. I hope that makes sense for that person that asked the question.
No problem. Um, any other questions? Then hearing that, I'll ask Sean to take Brian out for a second so I can do the roll call with the rest of the school committee and bring Mr. Rowe back. So Mr. Rowe, since you just came back, I'll allow you to go first. Um, although, Mr. Rowe, the motion? How do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Aye.
Mr. Givernone.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So thank you very much, everybody. And we'll go back to uh, Brian, because I think he's still, oh, he still has a couple more pieces on his calendar.
I do, I do. Uh, the next on my agenda is the coordinator of nursing. It's a proposed uh, additional administrative position. And I want to sort of talk to you about the rationale. Um, we do have some additional money that has come into the district through the uh, what's called the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, um, popularly known as ESER or ESER grants. And these ESER grants are based on uh, Title I allotments and come to our district on that basis, and the money can be spent on that basis uh, on on the sort of the rules of Title I, which means they can be spent on personnel. As a district, we have to write a grant and evaluate what our needs would be based on uh, this emergency relief, based on COVID-19, and where we would need uh, the help, where we would need extra attention. And certainly uh, the nursing area comes to that. As you know, um, we had a an essential health grant that was present in the district up until this year, and that essential health grant um, sort of dried up in our ability to use it to fund uh, physical positions, nurses, if you will, or any nurse supervisor. Um, so we weren't allowed to do that. So we we chose not to pursue the grant that would just give us supplies, but also had other things tied to it as the budget subcommittee, budget subcommittee notes, excuse me. Um, so what this grant allows us to do is to add personnel or partial personnel. Um, in the district currently, we have 5.5 FTEs, full-time equivalent registered school, certified school nurses. Uh, what we would be looking to do through this grant money would not affect the operational budget. Through this grant money is to offer a position to basically sort of eliminate the halftime floating position, if you will, and offer a position that would be a administrative position, much like an assistant principal or a special ed coordinator, sort of a middle level administrator, who would coordinate um, the uh, plan and coordinate the overall implementation of the health services program across the district. Um, right now, we have Derek Thompson doing that on sort of a stipend basis, and he's done a yeoman's work for somebody who's not a health professional. Um, but what this would do is is this would basically find somebody who was willing to do this, whether they be in the district or outside of the district, um, to be the administrator uh, and also be that sort of float nurse also. So the the half of it would be floating nurse and half of it would be working as sort of the supervisor of of health and coordinator services across the district. Um, granted, I know that through the budget process, we eliminated two administrative positions. I know that this is essentially adding an administrative position. But with regard to the current situation we have with COVID-19 and the need and attention uh, for nursing services and for student health and well-being uh, for next year and beyond, uh, I really feel it's I feel strongly that through this grant money, which is not going to affect the bottom line of the operational budget, through this grant money, we can bring this position to fruition in the district um, for next year and hopefully beyond to the this grant has has been extended through 2022 at this point. Um, so we're talking at least a couple of years. Uh, certainly evaluate it as something that that is something we'd look at in terms of extending down the road. But like I said, it'd be grant-funded, and it would be something that this person, I think, would bring great value to the district in their ability to even administer a medication, would require that they be a licensed school nurse. And hopefully, look forward to your approval of this position, your evaluation, obviously, of the need for this position, answer any questions you might have with regard to why. But I would open it up certainly through you, Mr. Chair of the committee.
So, this grant is for twenty-seven months, this twenty-seven months left on the grant that came from Sarah. And so, this position would be available for those twenty-seven months. As with in the past, when grant money runs out, we would have to make a decision in our budgetary process that we have done. So, this position would be available to us for twenty-seven months.
And, Mr. Chair, I think I saw a question there, it disappeared quickly, but I saw it, it said, would this be open to? So, this position is available for as long as the grant money is available, and that's the question I think you just answered. I also wanted to think, to say, because I thought that person was asking this also. And I want to stress that this is not something that has to go to a person that's currently employed by the Middleborough Public Schools. It is an administrative position. It's not dictated by union assignments or anything like that. But it would be offered to anyone who's, obviously, the preference in the preferred qualifications would include a licensed school nurse. The person would be a full-time administrator and would be probably a two-hundred-and-fourteen-day employee, which means the expectation would be that they would supervise the extended school year program also during the summer.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve this position.
Joe Harris, second.
Second.
Then I'm going to ask Sean to pull Brian out and bring Greg back in. Again, this requires a roll call vote, unless people have other questions. Anyone have any other questions before I go to the roll call?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Greg, go right ahead.
Just for purposes of discussion, I would like to say that if we are going to be adding anything, adding a nurse in the time of COVID-19 is probably one of our better options.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll go around the board. Mr. Giavononi?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, that passes, and now we come back to superintendent again.
The next item on my report is the 2020-2021 school calendar. As you know, the school building committee has been informed, and we've informed the committee here and the public through this forum, that we have now been delayed going into the high school until, I'm going to say at least, for worry, and hopefully, that's it. But you also know, the committee also knows that through contract negotiations last year, we agreed to allow the high school faculty a half a day to sort of pack up their belongings, and then another half a day to unpack their belongings in the new high school. And a sort of an afternoon and a morning, if you will, for the, our maintenance and custodial staff to move all that equipment over, all the supplies over to the new area, or new high school, excuse me, new area. So, I think that we need to look at the calendar with that in mind, in terms of the, sort of the week before moving, the week before February vacation, that we look at that Thursday, Friday, potentially, as those two days. Because those kids will be in school up until that point in the current Middleborough High School. And then, when they come back from Feb. Vacation, they will be going to the new high school, by design, under the new design, the new schedule. So, I think we need to look at the calendar with that in mind, and that would be my only thought. I know that during the school building meeting, that there, you know, and Mr. Young, and I know Mr. Giavononi had some thoughts, and I'm certainly would like to share them with the committee. But, so, through you, Mr. Chair, I hand this back over to the committee for discussion.
No problem. So, what we're going to do with this, and just so everyone knows, because same thing we did last time. So, we'll have this discussion, we'll put it out there for the community to look at, sort of post it every place we can, send it to parents, tell them we're going to have to move in the schedule for this coming year. Clearly, this is not the timeframe that we wanted to. We did this calendar, oh, so many years ago, I feel like, and I have had this conversation forever. So, I'm open to discussion about what people are interested in or not interested in. So, I'll throw it out to anybody who wants to go first. Mr. Giavononi, you always get first, because this is your last meeting, so I feel like I have.
I just wanted to throw out, when we were looking at the calendar, if everyone does have it pulled up, you know, on a side window, and you're looking at the December twenty-first and twenty-second, that December twenty-first and twenty-second, we were utilizing those as professional development days, the moving time that we were allotting for our faculty at the high school. I'd look at those two days, potentially moving them. And then, the question would be, at that point, if you're not going to have a full week, twenty, you know, the week of the twenty-first through the twenty-fifth as a full week off, you look at the twenty-third in case you need it for something in February. And I just, I was looking at that when we first started, when we first got the information at the building committee that it was going to push till February. You know, we had kind of adjusted our calendar for the December to have two solid weeks off. And, you know, we added the twenty-third as an extra day off, instead of just having a half day on the twenty-fourth, or a whole day on the twenty-fourth for Christmas Eve. We said, you know what, at the time, people can travel on the nineteenth if they wanted to, you know, and leave that Saturday before Christmas and really get a jump on things. So, that was that whole, there's three days there that you could really look at. I know I'm not going to be around to make that decision the next, on the next one, but I offered that piece there to look at. Thank you.
I think for me, one of the concerns is, and we're going to have to move the two days anyways, because we're going to have to account for the time that we need for teachers to be able to move their classroom, and also the time the teachers to be able to get some professional development on the building itself. But the problem lies, and then you essentially created an extended February break. And at that extended February break, you could in fact have parents scrambling to be able to get to time and use time for that week. So, that's, that's one of the concerns I have up front. Mr. Rowe?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I am of the belief that we should do something around February vacation, and whether it's take those days and move them, or do something more creative. I'm assuming it's within the contract with our union that we cannot take away the February break days and make those professional days, correct?
No, so, it's, so, we can take away, we can establish the calendar anywhere we want. The calendar is the purview of the school, okay? We are required, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's, we have to have two professional development days, or that'll be half-days for moving.
Right, there'll be a half-day, the first professional development day, there'll be a half-day to pack up. The second professional development day, the second half of it would be really to kind of unpack. And there would still be professional development going on on those days, and learning the new systems at the new high school. That was part of that, we wanted to get our staff in there to really give them a training, because, I mean, this is really their first real in-depth jump into the high school. So, that was kind of, and it gave the ability, because one of the pieces that you have is, gave them that ability, but the others, other faculty, if we wanted to, we could bring in other staff and faculty to actually do a little training if we wanted to, if we wanted to tweak it a little bit. So, those two PD days really are those two days. And February fifteenth is a holiday, national holiday, the President's Day, so we'd have to kind of stay away from that one anyway.
And my concern was, and that's why I asked Mr. Brandon earlier, was when their, you know, semester one finals are, how many days will they actually have? And the problem is, the same thing with this COVID-19, is that we don't know, like, if schools delayed because of COVID-19, or if they do that power term, which is a great idea for remediation, will that push that back? My fear is that if you, if you add days before the vacation, that you will end up with students who have class for one day, then have a vacation, then have a new class in the new building. So, my recommendation would be, if we are going to add two days, take the two days from December vacation, and if we're going to add them to February vacation, I would recommend that we add them after vacation, due to the fact that we're unsure of the academic calendar, and we don't want to mess with finals, we don't want to mess with the beginning of the new semester. So, I believe, at least from the limited information we have now, that might be the best option for students for continuous learning throughout that semester.
So, just to be clear, Greg, you're talking about adding the days to the twenty-second, twenty-third of February?
So, yes, so, remove the days from twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two of December, and then we would add them to the twenty-second, twenty-third of February. So, extending the February vacation by two days. And also, as a teacher, when we go through it, that is a very short break between December break and February break, while there's a very long stretch after.
The other question I'll throw out to people related to what you said, Greg, and that would be to add a day on each end. So, if you add the, for example, looking at that calendar, if you add a day before the vacation on the twelfth and a day after the vacation on the twenty-second. I get what you said before about moving into the new building, but that does a couple of things. It extends it out a little more, even though it's a day. It also puts families in non-peak times for vacations, if people are looking to go away. So, it gives, if you're looking to go away, it gives you a little opportunity to get out earlier without being in the middle of a school vacation when prices go up. So, and that satisfies our need, as Brian said, for the two professional development days. And also gives you a little time afterwards, too, like you said, you're hitting it before and afterwards if you want it. Meg?
Is there any way we can, like, pull teachers in the high school and see what they want? Because I know, me, I'm pretty good with technology, and so, going into a new building, I would probably only need the one day to kind of figure stuff out and look around and set stuff up, but I know that other teachers that are not as good at that. So, they would probably want the two full days in there to look at the new technology, to figure out where everything is, to kind of space their rooms up, set them up. So, I'm just kind of interested to see what the staff at the high school wants to do.
To be clear, that piece is contractual made. So, it'd be two days, half-days each for packing, and half-days of professional development. That's according to the contract.
Okay.
The first day, the first morning, you pack, the second afternoon, you unpack, and then you have PD for a full afternoon half on the first day, so you have like a full PD wedged in the middle of it all.
Yes, I guess, I'm just wondering if they'd want those two half-days after the vacation to really get into their rooms and really see what the layout of their room out and the new technology is, or if they'd rather it be split? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and just to be clear, because a question came in about doing it as two half-days, the half-day being with, the half-days that we do normally for professional development, where kids are in the classroom for half a day, and then we do a half-day of professional development. These will have to be full days of professional development contractual. Those are where we agreed to put the two days somewhere in relationship to the move-in. So, I just want to clarify that. Greg, again.
And also to clarify, with the move-in, it's the teachers, it's to allow teachers time to pack up their rooms, and it's allow teachers to unpack their rooms. So, that, and going back to my idea earlier, that doesn't make sense then, because if they pack, it's not all going to be moved right away, it's going to take some time and things like that. So, maybe, I do like the idea of a day before and a day after. That might be the best way to pull that off then. But I agree with Meg that the idea of asking the teachers, what's their preference, you know, and also, again, the academic schedule, while we're still waiting for that, I have no idea how long we can wait to do this, we need to let parents know ASAP. I thought we did a fantastic job of getting it well ahead of this before, and then we get hit with an unforeseen detour. So, so, when do we need to finalize this, and do we have time to pull the staff, is my question?
I would say, well, remember, we have to pull the whole staff too, Greg, because this includes everybody. It doesn't just include high school teachers, includes everybody. So, I wouldn't want to necessarily just pull high school teachers, for example, because this affects everyone. We, you know, what I would hope to do is put this out there, let people see it, let people discuss it, obviously, get some feedback, and hopefully, early in July, have a discussion. So, my assumption would be that we could ask Sean to find a way to pull the staff and see where they're at, and look at a variety of things, and go from there.
And with regards, Mr. Chair, with regards to the academic end of term, the January end of term, if I'm not mistaken, falls, the exam week falls right after Martin Luther King Weekend. And then, the next semester, it's weird the way it straddles, because what they do is, three days is spent getting the one group's schedules together, then the other three days, the other group, and they all meet with the counselors. Every student meets with a counselor, all eight hundred students meet with a counselor over the course of six days. It's, and that would be like the week of the twenty-fifth of January, I believe that's where that kind of falls in, which is, which gives you the three weeks before February vacation. If we did a two-week power block at the beginning of the school year, you'd take a week, and you'd push it back, you'd push it back towards February a week. You'd still have a couple of weeks, we don't even want to talk about snow, though.
Yeah, got it, sir. Greg, you're right ahead again.
Thank you, sir. Again, with this, Brian, thank you for that clarification. We'll miss that while you're gone. But also, with this, what happens with, I've lost my train of thought. But what will happen if there is some sort of delay with the school building? Like, I know before, we had supposed to get the keys in October and for January opening. What, when are we set, really, to get the keys right now, and is there a chance of more delays that would push us into March?
I believe we're getting the keys in January, so that gives us time to go through everything. That's part of the reason. They pushed it back because they wanted to make sure, well, first of all, they need to give us notice if they need to push back. It's an important piece, it's part of the contract. Their pushback was about the lack of numbers that it could have on-site under the governor's plan. You know, as things open up and as things are part of it, we have, we have, we have the potential to get done a little earlier. Again, I don't think it will happen for the, right after vacation in December, but I think it will get done a little earlier. They're basing their plan on the idea of running these numbers the rest of the way home, which is, which is, you know, they're at a lower portion of numbers. So, that's what they're basing this plan on. So, as things expand and they're allowed to do more, it adds more people to it and the ability to do more. Mr. Oakley?
So, Mr. Chair, if I'm hearing you right, it sounds like this is a, actually, like a worst-case scenario. But if things open up more over the summer, they could actually claw back some of those days, is that right?
They will claw back some of the days, but not enough to get us to the January, right after vacation day.
Gotcha, thank you.
You know, that's, you know, that's, that's not what they want to shoot for based on, you know, they want to be realistic in what they can and can't do. There was also a question out there about why we just didn't wait until June. We've made the determination as a group, and as the building committee, and as a school committee, that when this is ready to open, we want kids in it, because we don't want to run two buildings at once. We also feel the taxpayer paid a lot for this building, and was nice enough to do that with us. And we want our kids in there as soon as possible, because it opens up opportunities for our kids that we don't currently have under the middle. So, I hope that answers that piece. Any other questions about this particular piece? So, that being said, then, we'll sort of ask that the schools start putting this out there, so people can see. It looks like, Brian, we're going to take the days off of the Christmas vacation. Um, we'd like to look at where they could go around February vacation. Um, and we'd like to ask staff their input too, and as well as families in the community too.
Also, Chair, am I back on?
Yes, sir.
You're talking to this Brian now, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I just want to point out just a couple of things is that the Fontaine Brothers continues to tell us that they're going to have this building delivered to us on January sixth. Um, and, and deliver to the, what are quote-unquote, the owner, which is the town of Middleboro and the Middleboro Public Schools. So that continues to be, they continue to maintain that date. And hopefully that will be something that will uh, be the case throughout. Uh, the question about what if, what if, uh, you know, if things change, then this committee has to go back to the drawing board on, unfortunately. And, but that literally was what we need to do. Um, and I also want to tell you that, that if we don't use the, the twenty-first and twenty-second as professional development days, then we can also look at that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third as a short week, as a three-day week. And that way we can, we have more days in the calendar, at least to play with a little bit. Um, and not have that full two weeks. We had that full two weeks for students to be out only because of this high school move. So I would venture to say that, that most school districts in the area probably are going with the more traditional Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday week, the twenty-third is the last day, still have Christmas Eve day off. Um, and then have a week and a half off. So just, just a comment to that and, and closing that out. So uh, this will be on the agenda for our next meeting. Uh, and we'll continue our discussion and certainly seek input. Um, and uh, Mr. Chair, if you'd like uh, any type of, certainly survey, I heard that from the, the school committee, survey high school faculty in terms of seeing what their ideas are and what their preferences are. I will continue to take the input from uh, from folks uh, who are in the audience and, and beyond.
Well, Brian, just to be clear, I think we have to actually survey all staff because they're all going to be affected by this.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
That's fine. And we can, you and I can maybe get together and talk about, uh, and anyone, anyone else on the committee. Just let me know a question that you'd like to ask to make sure we have all our bases covered. Cause I'd hate to send out a survey and, and not ask something that you were interested in as a committee member to hear on the response on, or see the data on, so. So as we move on here, my final item here really, I think was supposed to be under school committee, but it was something that Mr. Young had put in there. Uh, Mr. Chair, the proposed resolutions, um, that were authored by the Mass Association of School Committees. Um, so I hand it back over to you, sir.
So um, I got word from the MSAC Board of Directors that they recommended and asked, um, that it was put in your Dropbox that um, the schools um, utilize these resolutions as soon as possible. It has to do with fiscal health to public and everything that we talked about beforehand on the uh, twenty-twenty-one budget. Um, so I wanted to put that out there. Um, and also there was another piece too, that I think everyone saw, which was about um, equity and diversity in this time. And so I put it out there for a discussion. So I wanted to see what people were interested in. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, yeah, I read those and I, I do, I did agree with them. So I would be in favor of putting those out.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Rep?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, the resolution about state funding looks like it was written by our friend Brian who is leaving us. So it's very appropriate that we have a resolution like this on his final day as it talks about unfunded mandates, um, which I never knew about until I was on this committee. So it's appropriate in honoring Brian on his last day.
Uh, exactly. I thought, that's part of the reason I thought he'd like it more than anything. Brian, would you like to say anything about the resolutions?
Sure, um, I think the state funding one, absolutely. Um, and then the second one, I don't think goes far enough. I think it should be more, there should be more to it. I, I, I think it should cover all bases. Um, I, at the beginning of the, the meeting, one of the things that's been running through my mind the last few weeks, um, that there were, there were a lot of groups that, and I, I want everyone to feel safe in this community. So that's what I mean by it doesn't go far enough. It should be more, it should be, I don't know. But uh, I didn't write it, so I look, I'm looking at it like, how would I cha- I don't know how I would change it to make it for, for, for more. But um, at this point, it's a starting point.
Any other comments or questions? So the two resolutions have to do with funding, it has to do with the school committee anti-racism uh, resolution. So the chair would entertain, let's do, I think we should do one at a time, if that's okay with them. So the chair would entertain a uh, motion on the resolution for COVID nineteen uh, state fund.
So who?
So Harrison. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say, oh, I gotta do the roll call. Brian, Giovanni?
Aye.
Meg Janess?
Aye.
Greg Rowe?
Aye.
Richard Oakley?
Aye.
Greg Stevens?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Through you, Mr. Chair, do we want to read these or do we just want to approve?
Um, it's entirely up to you. If you'd like to read them, Greg, go right ahead.
That's fine with me. Thank you, sir.
Will they be post, they'll be posted in the minutes or on our website?
Yeah, um, we could definitely post them out. Um, like I said, they came uh, very last minute. They actually came to me, I think, um, the day before yesterday late. Um, and obviously with, especially with regards to everything going on, they asked that people could address them as quickly as possible. And this is our, the meeting I knew about for a while, so. So Greg, go right ahead, please.
No, I was just asking how we're going to get them out there. If we publish them in the minutes, that's perfect.
Yeah, that's perfect. Okay, and then the second uh, resolution on racism, do I have the motion to approve?
Second.
Make the motion.
So I have a motion and a second discussion.
Uh, do we have, do we want to change the word district and put ours in?
Yeah, yeah, you know, absolutely. Everything will be changed clearly. Uh, Mr. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
And Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Uh, and the chair votes aye. Um, I, uh, Brian had sent me a quick note that we can post them on the school committee page of the district website. So that is, I believe, everything in the superintendent's report. Um, if you guys want to talk about uh, the building committee briefly, about those who attended the walkthrough?
Mr. Chair, how about we make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening?
Oh, thank you. Uh, I'll take a second for that since.
Second.
Discussion, uh, seeing none. Mr. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now we'll get into the building committee. So those who attended the walkthrough, want to talk about it just a little bit, that'd be great.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Might as well, since my last night. Um, what a fantastic walk that we had. We had some great weather. We were able to walk through the uh, the first and second floor, and then I snuck up to the third floor. Because on the third floor facing the existing school, if you look at our cameras that we have set up there that Sean set up, um, you can see that third floor, which is the art rooms, and the amount of light that was coming in there was beautiful. There's four big banks of windows in one of the classrooms that's divisible. But it's just incredible natural light coming in there. So I, I, I kinda, I snuck up there because I wanted to see, I knew it was going to be good, but I didn't expect it that, to be that good. Um, walking through and seeing each of the, each of the pieces, the, the auditorium, uh, and its current, uh, current um, condition, it's, it's being built. And uh, between that, the black box, as, as Greg Stevens mentioned earlier in the meeting, and the, the band room and the rehearsal room, it's really, really taking shape as you walk through there. So um, uh, if you, if you don't have a chance, anyone at home, if you're watching, if you don't have a chance, go to the, go to the um, the school website, click on the cameras, you can see the external cameras, but there are, every month, uh, our chair of that committee, Rob DeRoges has been narrating a sto- uh, uh, a kind of um, an in-depth and even going through the building and showing some of the buildings, the collaboration spaces. And it's just, I, I, I don't know about, I, I can't speak for everyone. I think we were all excited there, um, Saturday. And it just, it's uh, it shows that um, what this community is capable of doing, um, when we all put ourselves together. And, and it's just an incredible project.
Anyone else want to chant it? I think everybody had a really good time. I know, I heard from most people.
I made most of my comments in my report, sorry about that.
No problem, that's fine. Uh, anything else on the building uh, committee? Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Lynch, welcome back.
I, I just wanted to mention something really quick, that the fact that, that we really had a lot of participation. But I, I want to acknowledge Christie Murphy and Bob Tucker from Compass Project Management, and also Scott Wooden, architect, and Jim Barrett, uh, architect, both principals in the DRA company, uh, showing up on that Saturday to not only, uh, Jim Barrett was, it was, I think it's maybe a second or third time through, but Scott Wooden's there all the time. But uh, they, they, they really made it special. Uh, they were able to answer questions, uh, detailed questions from, from folks that had them. Um, and Jim Hutchinson, who's been in that building more than any other school employee, uh, certainly was able to answer some questions and explain things. Uh, we went through and uh, found things that, and looked at things that, that uh, you couldn't otherwise. So it's really was, I thought it was amazing. I do want to acknowledge those folks for taking their Saturday afternoon and coming down and, and showing a bunch of Middleboro folks through a building that's going to be spectacular when it's done.
Uh, I, I do want to say one piece too. It's always been the building committees, um, discussion and school committees and superintendent and Paul Bernigan's discussion. That as we get closer to the switch and we get closer, um, we're going to have events, sort of closing out the high school, opening up the new building, and there'll be other events, especially next year throughout that time, dealing with some of those spaces. For example, we've often talked about be dedicating the auditorium when it become, when the new building opens because it's going to become the Wayne and Karen Auditorium again. Um, so there's, there, there's lots of opportunities and I think everything that we're going through now, it's good to know that, uh, hopefully in a few months, some of those events will be coming up and we can have people there and really enjoy both the closing of the old school and the beginning of the new school. And so thanks. Any other questions about building? Then we'll move on with the agenda. Uh, I think my next item on the agenda applies to, right now, only one member of the school committee who's leaving, and I need to remind him to get the superintendent evaluation to me. So I will remind him, we finished all the action items. Um, we don't have a school committing date as of yet because as we tried to do throughout this process, um, we tried to make sure that we had enough information. Tonight was a lot. Um, but we tried to make sure there was information for everybody, um, and we were, we were learning new information as we went along. So this was really the time that we had the opportunity to look at what summer programs would all look like. If we had done it a week earlier, we probably would have been able to have that discussion. Um, so that's why we sort of picking and choosing when we have our next meetings because it makes sense. Mr. Lynch?
Mr. Young, before we close out tonight, I just want to acknowledge uh, and appreciate those five administrators that were a very important part of my report tonight. Um, and thank them for, for hanging on and, and providing that information. Thank you.
And I want to thank the community, um, again, uh, the biggest thing, um, well, first of all, I, one piece I want the community to know, uh, because this is really important. Um, we had the opportunity to hold this in open session in the Nichols Auditorium. Um, we talked about it. The problem became that we're under the order still that we could only have ten people in that auditorium. Now, while the community could have watched it live, clearly there would have been no input whatsoever because there's six school committee members, the superintendent of schools, the business manager, the person running the cameras, and our secretary. At that point, we're, we're at ten, we could let one person come in, walk in and out if they wanted to. Um, so that didn't make sense to us. You know, the, the, especially the pieces that we're talking about, the calendar, we're talking about the budget. We want to be able to listen to people and have people be able to communicate with us. Um, I, I'd like sort of the form where people can uh, tab and ask questions because it adds to uh, our ability to answer questions in real time and you sort of don't have to sit on your question. Um, I don't know what form this will take eventually. We're under an executive order that allows this. Um, at some point, we will have to go back to the old ways and if you want to communicate with us in real time, you'll have, you'll have to come to the meetings. We don't, we don't know if we can use this format. I happen to like this format because I think it's i- important and people can communicate with us and hopefully at some point we can figure out how to use this format legally too so that we can get real-time information. I'm going to look at that. But I just wanted people to know that, um, and that's the reason why. And with that, um, the chair will entertain.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Yes. Mr. Chair, I just want to say good morning, and if I don't see you, good afternoon, good evening and good night, and I move that we end this meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Normally, uh, the motion for adjournment does not allow discussion, but the chair will make uh, uh, exception in this case. And again, to say, Brian, thank you for your service to our community. I know you're not going anyplace in the sense of that you're, you're leaving the community. Uh, but we appreciate your service to the school committee and uh, can't emphasize enough how much I've enjoyed working with you over what all amounts to six years for me. And uh, again, thank you for everything that you've done. And with that.
And it's been great working with all of you and uh, I keep, keep uh, moving forward. And as, like I, I use Toby's word, uh, we, we, we have a district of awesomeness that can get even more awesomer. So um, please keep doing your job like you've been doing.
With that, the chair will continue the roll call. Vote Mr. Rowe.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Uh, the chair votes aye, and for the last time, Mr. Giovanni?
Abstain. Aye. I had to do it, I had to do it.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate everybody watching. So thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.